Did I get your question? [laughter] Did you know our guy Steve already is entering? [inaudible] I'm gonna go ahead and, excuse me, I'm gonna go ahead and call the Bloomington City Council Committee of the whole meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fizini.
Here.
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Lomelamoy.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Black.
Here. Yeah, I'm here.
Erin.
Okay, good, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and start out, as we do now with all meetings of this sort, with fifteen, up to fifteen minutes of public comment, and we have three people, and I'm gonna call them in the order in which they are presented here. First is Gene Cunningham, and you do have three minutes, and we will begin. Mr. Cunningham, would you come forward, please? And then, if you could state your name and address, just for the record for us. Thank you.
My name is Gene Cunningham, I live at fourteen oh nine Butcher's Lane in Bloomington. I've been a resident of Bloomington for a long time, seventy-four years. Anyway, I would like to show you a picture. This is Skating Place, a fundraiser that the kids had for me, and they had more food donated than we could all eat. I'd like to just bring out a couple of points. I've talked to a few people. If the city would consider buying the property out there, I would rent the building and refurbish Skating Place and put it back in business. We have about thirty thousand dollars pledged already from people who will buy new merchandise for skates and lights and sound system, that kind of stuff. Some statistics on Skating Place, we've been in business for forty-one years. We have had a lot of special things. We've had a hockey team that won second place in the United States. We've had speed racing, we've had one big trophy. We had a ladies bowling team, things along that way. Some of the things we have done is, you can't take your kids anywhere for New Year's Eve for twenty dollars and go out and not have to worry about until one o'clock. Okay? We have a birthday party planned. If any of you is grandparents or otherwise, they're taking your kids to Chuck E. Cheese, what did it cost you for ten people? You can bring ten kids, ten people to our place, it costs you ten, eight dollars a piece, eighty dollars, seventy, depending on what the circumstances. You get your admission, your skate rental, free pass to come another time, cupcake, a Dixie cup, a soft drink, skates, for the whole session. There is two buildings involved. I owed four hundred and ten thousand dollars on the buildings when they foreclosed on me, and it was an involuntary foreclosure. I was current on my taxes, my payments, and everything. I was caught in the middle of a problem where I'd sold a business for nine hundred thousand dollars, not that business, another one. People neglected to pay me. Part of the stuff went to Australia, part of it went to Georgia. I commenced to start suing the guy in Georgia. I spent fifty thousand dollars in two years. We'd get close to court date and things, he'd fire that lawyer, he'd get another lawyer. We went through four lawyer years. And then, I was, I wasn't pushed into it, I was put into it. And we filed for Chapter eleven to reorganize at that point. And the trustees, the two of them got together and said, "Well, you're gonna owe so much money." And I said, "Where am I gonna owe so much money?" Well, you're gonna have to pay all these people. I said, "That's fine." That's why I filed the reorganization. And, uh, so they got together and talked to the judge and said, "We're gonna change over to Chapter seven." So the next day, they seized everything we owned. We had twenty-one thousand dollars in our checking accounts. They sold my business, Illinois Pinball, which was paid for, for half a million dollars.
Mr. Cunningham, your time is up, I'm gonna have to ask you to finish your statement.
Oh, all right, I'll hurry up. Uh, what I'm asking, if the city will consider buying the buildings for eminent domain, I'll lease Skating Place's building for two thousand dollars a month, manage it, and put whatever has to be done to it. The other building is thirteen thousand square feet.
I'm sorry, your time really is up. I'm terribly, terribly sorry, but thank you for all that you've done, but I wonder if you can, you'll need to take your prop with you. Thank you so much.
I have any questions later, I'll be having a talk with you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Lambert.
Gary Lambert, thirty-eighteen East Oakland. Last Monday, there were several references made in discussion with flamingos as to the existence of a contract. The mayor also repeated that Tuesday morning on the radio. I attended most, if not all, of the meetings or discussions that were held regarding the budget. I never heard a single mention of the word "contract." I checked with my alderman, he said, in fact, that's a memorandum of understanding. I don't know the distinction, I'm not a lawyer. Question I would ask the entire council, open question. If somebody leaves a zoo ten million dollars, is the city of Bloomington then obligated to spend fifteen? It's enough of that, that's old business. I looked through the information for tonight, and I believe it's four C is the sewers. And there sure is some fuzzy math in there. And I'll leave it at that. But it says we're doing twenty of those failures a year at ten thousand each, that's two hundred thousand. And the solutions to that, they said, "Well, if we just took on the obligation to get all the money in the next ten years, and that'd be based on twenty-six thousand houses, that's two hundred and sixty million." So that would, my numbers may be off, my memory's not as good as it used to be, but that would be like eighty-three dollars a month. Well, the failure rate of twenty a year, if you would increase the taxes or the fee nine dollars a year, that would cover that two hundred thousand dollars. I could just see the council going wild if they had two hundred and sixty million dollars in hand, if those things. But personal opinion, I believe the homeowner's obligation ought to end at his plot line. Who knows why the damage was caused? Could have been caused by a tree that the city planted. A lot of the properties, you start talking about the poorer sections of town where you may have a fifty or seventy-five thousand dollar house, you're gonna ask him to go in there and pay ten thousand? The city needs to own up to its obligations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bruce Meeks.
Bruce Meeks, one four oh two Wright Street, Bloomington, Illinois. On August thirteenth, back in the day, two thousand and twelve, I filed with our city clerk to correct legal copies for an ordinance that I had labeled "City of Bloomington Website Transparency." Let me emphasize the word "ordinance." Over seven hundred days have gone by, I've gotten zero feedback from staff, zero feedback from the council criticizing, underlining, asking for changes, or even getting it presented because the mayor, the city manager, not just this mayor, have control over the agenda. Only, it takes five of you to put something on the agenda, and that needs to be changed. I did this for all of our citizens, not just for me, and some people have tried to frame it. What did you want, Bruce? This is for the many and not for the one. Due to the lack that we don't have a technology committee, suddenly, a policy shows up. Not one that has ever been discussed at the mayor's open house, not one that has come from the internist supposedly working on the all-in-one solution for open data, open access, transparency, sunshine, all those things that the council was talking about clear back in two thousand and eight. I did this to provide a solution. I did this as a citizen, trying to give you all input from a citizen who well researched this. I talked to five nonprofit organizations, one of which is the institute that is named in the ordinance. We are along, seven hundred days long past a policy. The staff has done a great job when they've had direction. I ask that you reconsider the policy and look at the ordinance as I have proposed, go through it, line things out, let's talk about it. I gave a hundred and twenty days before it could be enacted. I put the level of contracts at fifteen thousand dollars. I base this on cities in the city of Bloomington who have a ordinance, and I've had it for more than seven years. This came about because we were about ready to go live streaming, there was nothing really a policy or an ordinance of how to handle the archives and things like that. I thought would be good to give staff and the citizens direction. The budget should be up on the website for the past five years. The expenditure is past five years. The retention mentioned in the policy, to me, falls way short of an open access to this data that the citizens of this community own, not you, not the city manager, and not staff. There was never a roundtable discussion with any citizens on this topic, and here we are talking about a culture change. And we're gonna write a little policy so that you can all just say, "Hey, we did something, it's not enough."
Okay, thank you. It's normally not our procedure to respond to people, but I will just make one clear comment. To my knowledge, we've talked about transparency ordinance at almost every mayor's open house for fourteen months, so you're all welcome. It's four-thirty to five-thirty on Friday before every regular city council meeting, and nothing is off the table if you wanna come talk. Moving right along, we're gonna start out with item four A, and that is a downtown market demand feasibility study, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our acting city manager, and I believe you're gonna then recognize Mr. Kaler.
Absolutely, if we could have Frank Kaler come in and go ahead and introduce our guest today.
Certainly, Mayor, Council, you know, the revitalization of the downtowns is a critical concern to everybody here. And earlier this year, the city had engaged HVS Consulting out of Chicago to do a feasibility study as far as the prospect of a downtown hotel within downtown Bloomington. And allow me to introduce Hans, and he will present to you the findings of that study.
Just in order to clarify, as Hans is walking forward, thank you. We have had obviously a large amount of discussion about this, it was, we had this discussion even during almost a year of the campaign. The idea would be to clarify, we're talking about a private hotel, the city is not going into the hotel business, I just gotta keep clarifying that, and that the hope would be, would be a center of economic activity and growth, not just for our downtown, but for the future, and to help get more gigs in the Coliseum, reduce some of the red ink in the Coliseum, and help to be one of the dominoes that really begin to fall to revitalize the core, the central historic core of our community, just to clarify that. And Hans, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Really, I'm here just to answer questions that you may have, but I thought it might be a good idea to kind of back up and touch on a couple of the slides that we talked about in February that sort of highlight what our study concluded, and then, City Manager Hale's asked me to put together a couple of additional slides that could outline next steps that you may wanna consider. So, the slide up here kind of highlights the punchline that a private sector developer's gonna be looking for when they're trying to figure out, should I be building a hotel conference center in Bloomington, what's the potential? And the punchline here is that we're forecasting that this property would be able to achieve a sixty-nine percent occupancy by its third year of operations at a hundred and sixty dollar ADR, or average daily rate, and that's assuming that, that's in twenty eighteen. So, in today's dollars, that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, if you wanna compare that to what, what other hotels are doing. We then did a full detailed revenue and expense forecast. In the green row at the bottom of this chart is kind of the punchline of that financial analysis. What you can see on the bottom right-hand corner, and these are in thousands, is that we're projecting this property would have a net income of about two point six million dollars a year. And then, we can, we used a discounted cash flow analysis to basically convert that projected income stream into an opinion of what this property would be worth. What would, if it were built and it were operating as a hotel conference center, what would be, what would the property be worth on the open market? And our conclusion in the middle of the page here is a little over twenty-nine million dollars. Then, we compared that value of what the property is worth to what it might cost to build it, and I'm gonna put a big caveat on this page, we are not professional cost estimators, but we looked at dozens of similar properties that have been developed around the country, and got ahold of their budgets, and put together, you know, what you might use as a preliminary cost analysis. And if you add these numbers up, depending on whether you want to include land and the parking that would be needed as part of the cost, you have a development cost that's gonna range somewhere that's gonna be larger than the property's value. If you include the hotel, a twenty thousand square foot conference center, a three hundred stall parking garage, and land that may be worth a little over a million dollars, we're estimating this could be a forty-seven million dollar project. So, that's about an eighteen million dollar feasibility gap, the difference between the project's cost and its market value. So that's where we left off in February. Then, I just wanted to highlight a couple of potential next steps, and I should back up and say, I'm not here and HVS isn't here to advocate for or against a hotel project. We're here to advise you and answer questions that you may have so you can make the best decision. We've helped a number of municipalities work through the process of attracting a project like this, and the most successful projects typically go through a series of steps sort of like these. I'm gonna highlight the first three, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the developer selection process. I think it's really important early on to have, to define your concept. So, to communicate to the right people in the private sector about this opportunity, you need to define early on what level of hotel you're talking about. I think you should probably define a minimum number of guestrooms that you would require, minimum square feet of conference space, and I would define that as net rentable conference space, so there, you can avoid confusion with your communications with developers. You may want to define a minimum chain scale, or define certain brands that would be acceptable, and sort of let the brand quality assurance do a lot of the protection for you. You could shortlist a number of acceptable brands. Required amenities and information about the site that you require, whether it needs to be downtown, these are all things that I think should be part of the concept.
If I could just ask a question there about the site, so, especially if you're talking about downtown, it's not like there might not be multiple owners. That would be a question of it is, what scope of control does a potential developer have over the particular property that they're interested in building on?
Yeah, so, that's, that's a great question. I think that's, the next big point is land strategy.
Oh, sorry.
Which you led right into. So, should you, I mean, once you define the concept, you can define the amount of land needed to support that concept, but then I think it probably makes sense for the city to think about, do we want to acquire this land? Do we want to ask somebody acquire this amount of land? Do we wanna look at our current holdings, and basically see which of those current holdings of land might be in a good location to maximize economic impact, but also be large enough or the right size for this sort of a development? Or do you just wanna leave it up to the private sector and say, "We want this project, go negotiate some land, and if you end up paying more for it than we estimated, then the feasibility gap's gonna be larger." So sometimes it's, sometimes if you can develop the land strategy without all of the landowners sort of knowing that you're looking at their land for this project, you might, you might be able to get a better acquisition price. So, I think sort of defining that strategy early on is usually a key, key part of-
It's a little difficult to keep that a secret right now.
Well, I think there are, yeah, I think, I think-
This is pretty much the worst-kept secret in McLean County for a year and a half. But I get it, yeah.
But you, but you could potentially work with somebody who could acquire land for you.
Thank you.
I think a third big step that should be sort of thought about early on, and this is one that sometimes communities wanna leave up to the private sector to come to them with a financing plan and say, "Come to us with what you need from us." I think it can be to your advantage to define a financing strategy, so you know the product that you want built, and define what it will cost, and how it can be realistically financed by the right developer. And, you know, you shouldn't, shouldn't try to make something happen that can't be financed, but I think if you come up with a realistic finance plan and bring that to the development community, it's a lot more difficult for them to fudge on the feasibility gap, because you've put together a realistic financing plan, and you already know what you want, and you know what the feasibility gap should be. So if they're asking for more than that, then there needs to be a really good reason why. So I think those are the three kind of big things that I would recommend be sort of on decision-maker's mind if you decide to take the next steps towards this project.
And it is, I'm assuming it's not uncommon, because I've had multiple people do this already, come to me that if they decide to go forward, they're gonna make sure that they have their financing, so those pieces wouldn't, that wouldn't be something necessarily that we have to deal with.
Probably everybody that comes to you who wants to do this deal is gonna say, "It's no problem, we'll, we'll figure out the financing."
Part of what I'm asking, yeah.
The problem for the public sector is, is that if those groups that are coming to you have access to higher, more expensive sources of capital than who the best developer would be for you to partner with, then the people with access to the higher cost of capital are gonna be able to build a smaller, lower-quality end product for the same amount of incentives, because their cost is gonna be higher. So, or, if you define exactly what you want them to build, so that you're comparing apples to apples, their request of public subsidies is going to be larger than the developer out there who has the access to the lowest cost of capital. And I think that's gonna be one of the keys for minimize, maximizing how much private sector investment the public sector can get for every, every ounce of effort that you put into it, is to find the developers that have the access to the lowest cost of capital, because their subsidy requests can be the lowest. So, I think, you know, there are a few other steps that City Manager Hale's and I talked about that some cities get into, you know, but I think maybe the big one is the developer selection process. Often, that sort of has to be a public process, so use of request for proposals, an RFP process to go out and find developers that would be interested, vet them, and then develop some kind of a scoring system that's gonna bring you the right match. And, you know, what I would reckon, obviously, you know, we, we can help with that sort of a process, but if you decide to do it yourselves, I think one of the big recommendations I would make is make sure that cost of capital is one of the key scoring items when you're, when you're comparing developers. Force them to tell you what their cost of capital is gonna be. So I guess I'll leave it with that and maybe answer any questions that-
Questions, yes. Actually, I do have, if I could just start, two sort of corrections. One is the political science professor correction.
Okay.
And, this is minor, but frankly, it is a little annoying at my end, sorry. On page one hundred and nine, you have coefficient of correlation is ninety-three percent. There is no such thing as a coefficient of correlation. Now, if it's the correlation coefficient, that's never reported in percentage terms because you gotta square it. If it's coefficient of determination, it should be clear. So, at the very least, on page one oh nine, don't do that.
Okay.
The other thing is, I believe when you presented the first set of findings, you had said that if we had gotten the Route sixty-six visitors' center that would be a block away, that that would alter the, the calculation of this. In fact, we have gotten it, and frankly, I've gotten a lot of people who are interested in a variety of different investments, not just the hotel a block away, potentially a block away, but also along the Route sixty-six corridor. Do you have any idea how that might affect some of the dollars that you're talking about here?
No, not right now. I'd, I'd have to learn more about what sort of a demand generator that project is going to be. I think we could work that into some revised projections, but we'd have to learn more about it.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council, I'll, I'll be quiet now. Alderman Sage.
And Mayor, thanks for, I guess, asking that, because I thought part of what we were gonna answer tonight would be the impact, potential impact of, of the Route sixty-six Center, because otherwise, I can't really see much difference, you know, much added value, quite honestly, compared to what we talked about here a few months ago. I mean, we still have a seventeen, eighteen million dollar shortfall. We now have some kind of boilerplate process, if you will, as to how we might work through that. I wanna follow, follow up on something that I thought maybe I understood you to say. At the begin, at the beginning here of your remarks, did you talk, did, did you seem to indicate that, that you're not in the, the hotel management business? I mean, you're, you're basically a consultant?
That's right. I, I don't have a financial interest in whether you decide, "We're not looking at this project anymore after today," or, "We wanna make this project happen." So, I'm not an advocate for or against the project.
Okay. So, and I don't know how the, the pages may be numbered differently. On page twelve of what I'm looking at in, in the staff backup report, it references asset management. And, again, I'm, it looks to be page twelve, I don't see any, any page numbers for sure on the, the different, the different pages. It says, "Depending on the city's ultimate role in the facilities, there may be a need to oversee the city's interest in the facilities in an ongoing nature, which could be provided on an as-needed basis or as part of an asset management agreement." What does that mean? How does that pertain to HVS's role?
It doesn't necessarily, but that is a next step that the city's going to wanna consider if you do invest directly or indirectly in this project. If you, for example, if the city were to become an owner of the conference center, and you had a private sector owner of the hotel, and they were being sort of jointly managed, the city may want somebody evaluating the annual budgets of, that the conference center operator was presenting to the city, where somebody who has experience with management of those sorts of facilities, helping you make your, make your decisions while you're looking out for your interests.
And so that somebody would, could be you?
That could be, yeah.
Okay. You, you see the little, kind of the paradox I'm, I'm having a little trouble understanding, right? I mean, you're, you're either just on the front end of this and no involvement on the back end, or, or it appears that there is some, some involvement on the back end, or at least suggested here on this.
Well, yeah, we're, we're not engaged for any steps beyond the feasibility study. City Manager Hale's asked me pro bono to help come up with what would be some next steps for the city to consider.
Okay.
I spent some time putting those together, spent two trips, eight hours, both unpaid, to come down and try to answer additional questions. And I don't think a lot of my competitors would do that if they didn't have their heart in helping to advise-
Amount of land, we want to look at our current holdings and basically see which of those current holdings of land might be in a good location to maximize economic impact, but also be large enough or the right size for this sort of a development. Or do you just want to leave it up to the private sector and say, we want this project, go negotiate some land, and if you end up paying more for it than we estimated, then the feasibility gap's going to be larger. So sometimes it's, sometimes if you can develop the land strategy without all of the landowners sort of knowing that you're looking at their land for this project, you might, you might be able to get a better acquisition price. So I think sort of defining that strategy early on is usually a key, key part of-
It's a little difficult to keep that a secret right now.
Well, I think there are, yeah, I think, I think-
This is pretty much the worst-kept secret in McLean County for a year and a half. But I get it.
But you, but you could potentially work with somebody who could acquire land for you.
Thank you.
I think a third big step that should be sort of thought about early on, and this is one that sometimes communities want to leave up to the private sector to come to them with a financing plan and say, come to us with what you need from us. I think it can be to your advantage to define a financing strategy. So you know the product that you want built and define what it will cost and how it can be realistically financed by the right developer. And, you know, you shouldn't, shouldn't try to make something happen that can't be financed, but I think if you come up with a realistic finance plan and bring that to the development community, it's a lot more difficult for them to fudge on the feasibility gap. Because you've put together a realistic financing plan and you already know what you want, and you know what the feasibility gap should be. So if they're asking for more than that, then there needs to be a really good reason why. So I think those are the three kind of big things that I would recommend be sort of on decision makers' mind if you decide to take the next steps towards this project.
And it isn't, I'm assuming it's not uncommon because I've had multiple people do this already, come to me that if they decide to go forward, they're going to make sure that they have their financing. So those pieces wouldn't, that wouldn't be something necessarily that we have to deal with.
Probably everybody that comes to you who wants to do this deal is going to say, it's no problem. We'll, we'll figure out the financing.
Part of what I'm asking, yeah.
The problem for the public sector is, is that if those groups that are coming to you have access to higher, more expensive sources of capital than who the best developer would be for you to partner with, then the people with access to the higher cost of capital are going to be able to build a smaller, lower quality end product for the same amount of incentives. Because their cost is going to be higher. So, or if you define exactly what you want them to build so that you're comparing apples to apples, their request of public subsidies is going to be larger than the developer out there who has the access to the lowest cost of capital. And I think that's going to be one of the keys for minimize, maximizing how much private sector investment the public sector can get for every, every ounce of effort that you put into it, is to find the developers that have the access to the lowest cost of capital because their subsidy requests can be the lowest. So I think, you know, there are a few other steps, steps that City Manager Hales and I talked about that some cities get into, you know, but I think maybe the big one is the developer selection process. Often that sort of has to be a public process, so use of a request for proposals and RFP process to go out and find developers that would be interested, vet them, and then develop some kind of a scoring system that's going to bring you the right match. And, you know, what I would reckon, obviously, you know, we, we can help with that sort of a process, but if you decide to do it yourselves, I think one of the big recommendations I would make is make sure that cost of capital is one of the key scoring items when you're, when you're comparing developers. Force them to tell you what their cost of capital is going to be. So I guess I'll leave it with that and maybe answer any questions that-
Questions, yes. Actually, I do have, if I could just start two sort of corrections. One is the political science professor correction.
Okay.
And this is minor, but frankly, it, it is a little annoying at my end, sorry. On page 109, you have coefficient of correlation is 93 percent. There, there is no such thing as a coefficient of correlation. Now, if it's the correlation coefficient, that's never reported in percentage terms because you've got to square it. If it's coefficient of determination, it should be clear. So at the very least on page 109, don't do that.
Okay.
The other thing is, I believe when you presented the first set of findings, you had said that if we had gotten the Route 66 Visitor's Center, that would be a block away, that that would alter the, the calculation of this. In fact, we have gotten it, and frankly, I've gotten a lot of people who are interested in a variety of different investments, not just the hotel a block away, potentially a block away, but also along the Route 66 corridor. Do you have any idea how that might affect some of the dollars that you're talking about here?
No, not right now. I'd, I'd have to learn more about what sort of a demand generator that project is going to be.
Okay.
I, I think we could work that into some revised projections, but we'd have to learn more about it.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council? I, I'll be quiet now. Alderman Sage.
And, and Mayor, thanks for, I guess, asking that because I thought part of, of what we were going to answer tonight would be the impact, potential impact of, of the Route 66 Center because otherwise I can't really see much difference, you know, much added value, quite honestly, compared to what we talked about here a few months ago. I mean, we still have a 17, $18 million shortfall. We now have some kind of boilerplate process, if you will, as to how we might work through that. I want to follow, follow up on something that I thought maybe I understood you to say. At the begin, at the beginning here of your remarks, did you talk, did, did you seem to indicate that, that you're not in the, the hotel management business? I mean, you're, you're basically a consultant?
That's right. I, I don't have a financial interest in whether you decide we're not looking at this project anymore after today, or we want to make this project happen.
Okay.
So I'm not an advocate for or against the project.
Okay. So, and I don't know how the, the pages may be numbered differently. On, on page 12 of, of what I'm looking at in, in the staff backup report, it references asset management. And again, I'm, it looks to be page 12. I don't see any, any page numbers for sure on the, the different, the different pages. Says depending on the city's ultimate role in the facilities, there may be a need to oversee the city's interest in the facilities in an ongoing nature, which could be provided on an as-needed basis or as part of an asset management agreement. What does that mean? How does that pertain to HVS's role?
Doesn't necessarily, but that is a next step that the city's going to want to consider if you do invest directly or indirectly in this project. If you, for example, if the city were to become an owner of the conference center and you had a private sector owner of the hotel and they were being sort of jointly managed, the city may want somebody evaluating the annual budgets of, that the conference center operator was presenting to the city, where somebody who has experience with management of those sorts of facilities helping you make your, make your decisions while you're looking out for your interests.
And so that somebody would, could be you?
That could be, yeah.
Okay. You, you see, you see the little, the, kind of the paradox I'm, I'm having a little trouble understanding, right? I mean, you're, you're either just on the front end of this and no involvement on the back end, or, or it appears that there is some, some involvement on the back end, or at least suggested here on, on this-
Well, yeah, we're, we're not engaged for any steps beyond the feasibility study. City Manager Hales asked me pro bono to help come up with what would be some next steps for the city to consider.
Okay.
I spent some time putting those together. Spent two trips, eight hours, both unpaid, to come down and try to answer additional questions. And I don't think a lot of my competitors would do that if they didn't have their heart in helping to advise public sector customers.
Okay.
So, I mean, my, I enjoy advising cities. My background's in, in public service as well. So, you know, I can tell you that my goal here is to offer the best advice, and we, we showed, we shared with the city manager what some of the next steps would be. And we've positioned our company to be able to offer services within those next steps, but we have not been engaged to, to do any of those.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Painter, and then Alderman Black.
I have a question about if we help to fund the, the conference center, what kind of cut in the profits would we get? How would we figure that?
Well, I think how, I, I don't think you probably would get a cut in the profits unless you wanted to own the property and, own the risk and, and the net income from the property. But given the size of the feasibility gap, one way to close a feasibility gap would be to fund certain aspects of the project. Like, you know, what, what the City of Normal did was, they basically built the conference space and they built the parking structure, and then they brought in a private sector developer to build the rooms tower. So there, they did that to close the feasibility gap to get the project that otherwise wouldn't have been built. They didn't get it because they were going to share in the profits of the conference space itself.
Okay, then what would we get out of it?
Well, in my opinion, you would get a project that otherwise wouldn't get built. And you would get to define what that concept is.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Okay. And of course, just as a, no, some of the other ways that you do that is, you could, you could rebate hotel motel taxes. And that was one of the, the things at Normal that at this point, we're not, we're getting zero, so anything we're rebating isn't coming out of our budget.
Right.
And then there are, we could conceivably create a TIF district of some form. Let's see, I think it was Alderman Black, then Alderman Sterns, I believe. Did you, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I guess my, my questions are more directed at the council than anything else, and I guess I'm a little confused. I, I was under the impression that we would be coming here today with, with a couple different options and, you know, kind of the pros and cons, and I was under the impression that this data would kind of underpin our potential next steps. Am I mistaken about that? I mean, what, it seems like we've gotten, basically as Alderman Sage pointed out, the, mostly the same information that we got several months ago. Are we going to be sending him back to provide us with more data regarding the potential impact of that Route 66 museum? I guess I'm going to carry that.
At, at this point, I, I thought, when we talked, talked before, I thought that we'd have that, had, would have been incorporated in this.
Right. And I, I appreciate the pro bono work you've done, and this, this really is good information for us to make some sound decisions. And I, I still think I'm left at the same point I was the last time we met, which was that 18 million dollar gap is, is a pretty tight gap. I mean, it's, it's a very drive a truck through that sucker. And I don't think any of us here, given our budget, current budget constraints, have the appetite for that. But I, I guess, what are our next steps here? Are we going to-
Well, first of all, just a, an 18 million dollar gap is sort of a relative thing, and you can maybe speak to that. It, it's not necessarily one that the city's skin in the game has to mean that you open up the city treasury.
Sure, of course.
Are there any number of things that you can do?
And we, we can play around with, with some different mechanisms, but I guess I'm more confused as to, at what point do we decide this is a project that we'd like to go forward on, and here's our skin in the game? Or do we decide we've put enough money into this and we're, we're done spending consultant fees?
Well, at this point, at this point, it's, this is the first wave of analysis and talking to other mayors and other people.
Sure.
And people in the hotel industry, Crystal Howard Convention Visitors Bureau, they say, you, you pretty much have to do this.
Right.
You can't do this internally, since before we hired you, because nobody will believe your numbers. They'll think you're cooking your own numbers. So if you're taking, if you're going to be going into the private market, you've got to have someone who is independent in a sense of the city doing this kind of analysis that's, that's well-respected and understood. So I think at this point, this is more information. I would have liked to have had more info on the impact of the visitor's center as well.
Right. But I, I guess, okay, that being said, we have our foundation, we have our independent group that's come through and given us this information, and it is what it is. The data just speaks for itself. Do we at some point decide as a council, okay, this is a project we want to make happen? Is that our next vote, or is it going to be a?
That's up to us as a council. I mean, it could, it could be that we send an RFP and see what we get, and then we look at the proposals and see if any of them are acceptable.
So what's the timeframe for that? Would we be looking at, you know, six months, or, you know, come back and say this isn't something we want to do?
I, I would guess it would be a lot less than that if we're really, if we're going to move at all.
Right.
But it's, that's up to us as a council.
So would that come back in a regular council meeting?
It could, or it could, well, ultimately, if we're going to send an RFP, that would have to be at a regular council meeting.
Right.
But there may be another phase in this. But one of the difficulties is, partly because of the, since you have presented stuff to us, I had a, I've kind of had multiple waves of people, literally from almost the day after I was elected, before I was even sworn in, coming, talking about different kinds of speculation. And you can sort of tell in an order ranking how serious someone is. And there's sort of a triage, people who are clueless, and then people who are fairly serious, and people who are very serious. The number of people who've been very serious have increased dramatically. And since the Route 66 Visitor's Center, there's an even greater increase. Now, then there's the idea, you know, when, at what point do you send this out as a council's logically asking? And it, it may be that, you know, we send it out and we don't like anything that we get back. And, but certainly it's-
Which is my next concern, because what happens if we do send that out and then somebody can fill that 18 million dollar gap with something that we're not even talking about? The, the private market, or private sector comes back and says, we can put a hotel here, but it's not going to be what you're talking about. Is that something that we can come back and conceivably deny? I mean, it's more philosophical than it is an actual answer.
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think that's the pretty, I could, Jeff Jurgens could give us all kinds of chapters.
I'm sure.
But I think at the end of the day, yeah, I mean, we're, we, we can do that.
I guess, my, my last comment will be, and I'm, I'm sorry I take up so much time here, would be that it, it just seems very, I'm very unclear as to the, how this is going to play out in the next, you know, few months, few, few years essentially. And I think that as a council, we, we could do a better job of kind of shaping where that goes. Because, you know, I pay attention to this stuff, and I'm a little baffled by what's going on. I, how is the average citizen who's not, you know, just kind of seeing, reading it in the paper, hearing bits and pieces of it? I mean, that's, I, I want to make sure we're getting good feedback, and, and I appreciate the data set, it's very important, and we want to make database decisions, but I think as a council, we need to kind of make a, a decision about what direction we're going to go.
It's confusing, and actually, when, if you talk to, I've talked to more than 12, you talk, just a number, you talk to 12 mayors, they have 12 different stories of how it has been told.
Twenty-four different answers, yeah.
I mean, other than at the end of the day, you, you do send out an RFP, sometimes you send out an RFP, and you know that there's going to be an innovative developer out there who's going to snatch on it, and, because they, you know, they told you what they're going to do, and you think, okay, that sounds great.
But, you know, this committee of the whole, the idea would be to give staff direction as to what we want to do next.
That's right.
And so my, my recommendation as one voice of this council would be to, to lay out a timeline as to what we're looking at, whether it be an RFP, and if, see if we, what we get back, and if it's based on this data, and then we can make a vote whether or not we're comfortable with that kind of feasibility, excuse me, that, that gap that we could have. So that's my opinion.
Timeline as the next step. Right, okay. Let's see, I believe it was Alderman Sterns, and then Alderman Middlewumpway.
So basically, just Mayor, thank you. And to understand this, we need to enclose our questions and our comments in probably one, couple minutes, three minutes, is that correct? Questions and comments?
Yeah.
I mean, we're not going to go around a couple times, I don't think, are we?
No, probably not.
You don't have the time for that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try to be as brief as I can because I have a lot of questions. And one of which, of course, the, the comment is that understand and appreciate the pro bono that you've done for us, but clearly, one of the next steps would be further analysis, which is discussed in our item, which would be, you know, potentially $45,000 in consulting fees for the next stage, if you will, of various numbers that you would present. And, you know, anyway, so, questions. Putting out the RFP, what would the RFP be for? I mean, clearly, in, in comment here, if a private developer wanted to build a hotel in downtown Bloomington, saw a profit and had, you know, a simple profit motive, I think they probably would be coming to us, approaching us, and they would have all kinds of scenarios for us to maybe consider, given that they would need all kinds of zoning variances, what have, what have you. That, that certainly isn't happening, which to me is, is significant. So the RFP, so the city, the city begins to conjecture and talk and think, and I think we're pretty far along in that process right now, which is kind of concerning to me. And the further we get, the more it doesn't, it's not if, it's what. It doesn't surprise me one single bit that private developers are interested. Obviously, there are a lot, there are some that do this sort of thing. And when they see an, an involvement of, of private, public money, when they see an involvement and a potential for low risk for them, potential for income for them, why wouldn't they be interested? But here's my question, what would the RFP actually be for, since we as a city are issuing that? I mean, I can imagine, but-
Yeah, this, this is where I would like to offer advice from my standpoint.
Okay.
When you, when you develop and issue the RFP, even if you, if you're doing it alone, you could say, development community, please show us the best hotel and conference center project that you can build and tell us what you need. What, what I'm suggesting here is that it, it might be to your advantage if you define the concept, define the land, land strategy, and define how you think it should be financed first, before you issue that RFP, so that they know that you know what this project is, and they can't come in with something that sounds like a high-quality hotel or some vague term like that. Get a year into it, and then, you know, realize it's not exactly what you want, and oh, you want this, well, the, our ask just got a lot bigger.
Right. So the private, the, the private developer, actually what we're doing in sending out the RFP, according to your defining, and then they're coming back to us with here's what we need from you, essentially?
Right.
Okay, okay. So that, that would, would prove interesting, but, and, you know, it, it would be fascinating to get your scenarios of what they would want. Land, you know, a, a financial investment, a, a big portion of the risk involved. And I guess I need to close my comments, but in looking at your scenario of what this hotel would potentially be worth, very clearly, there are huge variables. I mean, you know-
Right. How many rooms you require, how much conference space-
Population, major employers, unemployment versus employment rate, et cetera, on and on and on. Availability of other facilities, on and on. So the variables, I think, are, you know, considerable, and frankly, from my, from my standpoint, I just want to say this, because really, I think it's a defining moment for council, and I think council really does need to kind of declare, you know, what they're thinking. And I am thinking at this point in time, public involvement in a process like this is not acceptable to our citizens, given their tax burden, and given the many, many, many risks and obligations that this city already has. Pensions, sewers, I don't even have to list them, but that's my take on it, and I do appreciate your, your help and involvement. Thank you.
And, and just to clarify, there have been a pretty steady stream of people in the private sector that have been interested in it. And at the, certainly, we have Alderman Maboka.
Oh, sure. I guess I, my question is about the, your occupancy projections. I, I've talked to a few people who were concerned that the, the projections were sounding a little bit too optimistic, given what's happened with, you know, State Farm and big project, you know, done, but also as well as, you know, a couple of other hotels coming online sometime in the future. So I guess my, my question is, is there, from this point, is there room for you to revise those projections so that we can get the, the project with the right scale? You know, do, do we, I mean, do you see it as absolutely us having to, to do this size of a hotel, or is there room for, for?
No, I, I think that's a great question, and that's part of what's involved in concept definition. So you can change the size of the feasibility gap by changing the concept. So I think as a starting point, we developed sort of a concept or a prototype that we thought would be a good balance and a good starting point, but now I think it's, you know, it's a good time for the decision makers involved in this process to figure out, do we want that concept? Do we want to do everything we can to minimize that feasibility gap, even if we'll have a smaller concept? If we keep the same room count but get rid of conference space, could we eliminate most of that feasibility gap? Or do we really need to keep the conference space? Could we cut back some of the room count on the hotel? You know, what, what ways do we have to fill the feasibility gap that do not, you know, add burden to residents and taxpayers? You know, are there ways that we can basically tax this project or the tourists who stay at it? You know, what do those add up to? What kind of a feasibility gap could we cover with those types of mechanisms? And then work towards a concept definition that closes the feasibility gap that you think you can afford, and then define that as the project that you want. I think that's exactly the sort of exercise and questioning process you need to work through before you take this to RFP.
Alderman Zizini, and then Alderman Lowery.
To start with, I'm not interested in the 17 million dollar gap. I wasn't when you presented the first time, nor am I now, but I am interested in the economic development that would come along with a conference center and a hotel downtown. So we have, you know, those sort of at odds. I do believe an RFP is the way to go. Having experienced financing hotels as well as other large projects in the city, we need to let the developer come to us with the plan. And we need to make sure the developer isn't coming to us with a plan without having control of the land upon which that plan is based. So any RFP should probably identify that when you come to us with the plan, you better have the land upon which you're going to have things built in your control. Otherwise, don't give us the plan when I even go look at it. So with, with those things in mind, I'd rather have the risk of someone coming to us and telling us how to do this without a gap. Or we have a gap, but it's not a cash gap, it's a gap going forward. You're going to have more sales tax money coming in, we want a part of that. Fine. Part of something that's increasing is better than 100% of something that is where it is now. That's how the shops at College Hills worked, okay? The developer wanted $5.5 billion upfront, the town of Normal said, no, you're not getting that, but we will give you 1% of the sales tax, and we calculated as the bankers, that comes out to $8.5 million over 15 years, we'll take it. So a 1% of something going forward versus cash upfront. So if we give a developer guidelines like that, don't come to us for money upfront, tell us how you're going to increase things, and we'll give you a part of that, that's okay, but make sure that you have the land that you're talking about because we're not going to go out and get it, because if we buy it, it's going to be more expensive. You figure it out. So those are the thoughts that I would have. No big gap, no money upfront. And I agree with the previous Alderman who said the, the projections that I saw, $160 per night, 80 hour, that's a little optimistic for me. And seeing every year that the occupancy rate's going up, hotels in this town, it goes up and it goes down. As soon as we get the occupancy rates come up, we see several hotels say, I'm going to build a new hotel because this is a great place, and then the occupancy rates go down. So to see it go like that, it doesn't. It goes like this. And it's happened that way for the last 20 years. Those are just thoughts from somebody who's done the financing.
Okay, thank you very much. Alderman Lowery, you'll be the last.
I, I certainly appreciate most of Alderman Zizini's comments in terms of the financing and, and what he has seen, and I, from a developer standpoint, and, and one that's worked for a developer, and we're talking about the College Hills Mall, I agree. It is a very cyclical and very competitive market. And the underlying theme of my comments tonight are minimizing the risk to the people's money. And I, I really think that we're overstepping our bounds when we, when we risk the people's money. That, that's something I don't find acceptable. Some of the more integrated questions that I've got here, and I've got a number of them, please bear with me. In the strategic plan, I fail to see the need for the project, retention and growth of the current local businesses to attract new businesses, et cetera. I, I don't, I don't see a clear-cut goal, I don't see a clear-cut defined benefit to the community. What specific components of the, of the project are necessary to influence local business and maintain the current presence? I just, I, I, I'm not quite there yet. What evidence do we have that this is actually going to create any new business? I would have to see something a little bit more concrete in order to sign on to anything like this. Currently, we have an unknown and unidentifiable benefit to the community or downtown, as far as I'm concerned. Proposed potential impact study, there's not enough support in terms of speculation in the present or in the future showing a real demand or a need, especially when it comes to risking public money. You know, historically, typically, we would look for, you know, interest like- public money. You know, historically, typically, we would look for, you know, interest like Judy Stern's just outlined, from the private sector. If there's money to be made, those folks are going to be out there looking for it, and believe me, there's, when you're only able to garner a couple of percent in the bank, they're out there looking for investment, and something that they can sink their teeth into and make a little bit better interest on their money, and that's what risk is all about. I just, I don't see the demand here. Do we have any parameters for the responsibility of the city's participation in the project, from the beginning to operational facility? We don't, I don't think we defined that yet. Awful lot of unknowns there. It talks in here again, and I keep seeing this through a lot of our paperwork, finding and targeting the right fit, and I don't know that I've got that defined in my own mind. What is the right fit? To me, any outside speculation and outside private funding would be a great thing, and I don't know that we necessarily are going to tell anybody they're not the right fit in this current economic condition. Another thing that we're not really fully understanding and fully accepting, I don't believe, as a council, is the State Farm influence. Our largest, by far, our largest employer is downsizing in the community, and I don't want to downplay the fact that we need to cheerlead, but on the other hand, we've got to face reality here. They are shipping folks out, and they're shipping some high-dollar folks out, and so at some point, we're seeing a little blip in that cyclical environment where we're, you know, State Farm's bringing a lot of folks in to try to facilitate their geographic transition, but what collateral effects are going to happen here on down the road, 18, 24, 36 months out, and even farther? What, you know, in a facility like this, I would assume that we've got a 20-year or 30-year projection. At some point, we've got to either remodel the facility, including a conference center, or we've got to get out of the market, okay? And so, what would, and I know, we're dealing with a lot of ifs here, and we don't really know. So, again, some definition that I don't know that really it's even something that we should be even considering. So, you know, I don't feel we've got, I think we've got a lack of the necessary factors or definition to those. You know, one thing I think is very important to realize that this concept has been around since 1965, okay? The Hotel Downtown, okay? So, are we really dealing with 19th century thinking, or are we moving into the 21st century here? I'm not really sure that we're dealing with what we really should be. The thought that we have to have this downtown is not reticent in my mind. I don't know that that's necessarily what we should be about. We've got to think, big picture, we've got to think about the entire community. I have a developer, okay, that has some plans for property that he already owns in Ward 1, and so are we talking about going into competition with him, building a new hotel, and he is not asking for any capital, he's not asking for anything, but try to, you know, smooth out the zoning process and help him to move forward and meet all our requirements. That's really all they're looking at, and the timing for that right now is not necessarily right. The economy is not really on the rebound to his satisfaction and what they really need to see from our community, and so I'm not sure that we're going to do that in the next, or he's going to do that in the next 18 months, but at some point, if we go ahead with something downtown, we may have a competitor, and that's something I don't think anybody's really considered here. If five years down the road, somebody builds something bigger and better in our community, what's going to happen to the occupancy rate of something that we're involving public money in? There's risk there.
Thank you. In fact, just a couple of things. Essentially, demographically, economically, we have changed since 1965. We, not just in Bloomington, but throughout the country, right? We had suburban sprawl, people were building houses with aluminum siding on Greenleaf Court, way away from their jobs in the center of the core of the town. That's not happening anymore. There's a great inversion, and that's what's slipping, and we see some of it in our community, and it's why places like, you know, even whether it's Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, or Chicago, whatever, we've been losing people for 50 years and now gaining people, and that's basically what, pretty much, when I go to talk to mayors or the National League of Cities, the developers, the hard-nosed business people, and everybody said, "You ain't building strip malls to prosper in the 21st century, it's your downtowns." We've got people like us, who are similar to us, with 80,000 people, who are in the suburbs of Dallas, Fort Worth, Seattle, Tacoma, who are spending a half a billion dollars, cities our size, $500 million, building a downtown, because they don't have one, right? We've got one, and that's going to tend to be the means we've got toward prosperity. And if you do your incentives right, as Alderman Fazini had talked about, like, you know, regardless of what we think about the look of the projects in Uptown, the first phase was the most heavily subsidized. They did that right, second phase, they didn't, you know, the incentives came down. Third phase, they were virtually nonexistent, and now you've attracted capital, and capital is seeking its level, and it's happening. And so, those are, there's a tipping point. It's pretty much any developer, economist, whatever is going to tell you. At some point, you get a tipping point in a core mass, and it takes off, and I think that's part of what, we're way beyond our time, so we're going to come back to this, obviously, you know, with this, because we've gone way over any last words very quickly.
Well, thank you for inviting me here.
Okay. Thank you very much. If we can move on again, just so that everyone clarifies, we're just, over time, this is just one phase, we're going to take a look, and the council will, you know, digest this information, and then we will be moving on. And our next topic is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, IMRF benefits for elected officials or acting city manager. We're going to turn it over almost immediately to Ms. Bell, so come on forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity. You have in your packets a couple of documents that reference Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund and participation of elected officials. What I'll try and do is summarize what you have before you, so that we can get right to the issue at hand. The resolution that's on record currently was adopted by the council on May 11 of 1998. That document establishes that the council has the ability to voluntarily participate in IMRF at the 1,000-hour cap. We previously were under the 200-hour, or 600-hour cap, and that resolution changed it to the 1,000 hours. In April of this year, the IMRF conducted an audit, and in preparation for that audit, you all received a verification form that you were requested to complete, to basically determine whether or not you were meeting the 1,000 hours. That's where the concern was raised by the city manager with regard to how were we calculating and what were we calculating for the 1,000-hour threshold that we are to meet. One of the documents that you have is from the IMRF that talks about what can and cannot be included in calculating your hours. When we received the verification forms from those council members who did complete them, we were pretty much all over the board with regard to the number of hours that the mayor and the council were reporting, that they were working for the city in their positions. So, if I could call your attention to that document, it's section 3.65F. It speaks to what can be included in that 1,000 hours. So, it's not only the attendance at your official meetings, such as tonight, and your regular council meetings, but also meetings and telephone calls from your constituents and other officers and employees, attendance at civic functions in your official capacity as elected officials, and also attendance in meetings at municipal organizations. What is not included is what they're referring to as on-call. So, that time and also travel time, any travel time to meetings is not included. So, what we're needing to do is to come up with something that's more systematic for the council to make a decision on what in fact, and we need to document, what hours will be included in the 1,000 hours or work from the council, so that we have everyone basically operating in the same fashion with regard to what hours they are. If the council elects to continue to have the opportunity for the elected officials to voluntarily participate in IMRF, if that's not the wishes of the council, then of course they can adopt another resolution that basically eliminates the ability to participate in IMRF altogether. So, tonight, it's an information...
Just to clarify, though, 1,000, about 1,040 hours is halftime, so that would be, right, throughout the course of a year, about 20 hours a week or something like that, although I have to say, I'd love a 20-hour a week, but just for clarification purposes.
Correct.
And so, we're looking for the council to weigh in. Alderman Frune, start with you.
Thank you. Couple of quick questions. Tell me how we varied on our responses. How many council members responded, and then what was the range from high to low?
I believe we had six of the council people that returned the document, and I don't have specific hours, but one of the things that was referenced is that Councilman Fazini does a documentation of the meetings and the activities that he's participated in, so he captures hours, but again, it, there needs to be a consistent way of everyone documenting the same activities so that we're consistent across the board.
If I could clarify on that, so, we would, you wouldn't do that every month necessarily, but we would talk about what would a typical year be, what would a typical month, so...
Yes, sir.
There might be a month that would maybe be a little lighter, but then the heavier months might exceed that.
On an annual basis, so we would have to have something that would demonstrate that collectively, the members of the council, the mayor and the council, are putting in hours that would exceed 1,000 hours in order to continue to have that option to voluntarily participate.
So, before I go to Alderman Painter, just, what would that look like? So, we would basically say, or the council would, I mean, the mayor, I guess, is a different story, or at least in terms of time allocation, but the council then would say, you know, "On average, I spend about 20 hours a week, or 20 to 25 hours a week, and these are the types of things that I do." It would be kind of a prototype week? Is that what we would need?
I believe that's what we're looking for, because based on the guidelines that we received from IMRF, you'll notice that right in the second paragraph of number one, it talks about, "If the 1,000-hour, annual hourly standard is applicable," which is, it is for us, we're at the 1,000 hourly standard, "barring highly unusual circumstances, the governing body positions will not qualify to participate." So, they're looking at an average of what they see in other municipalities from their elected officials and what they are actually rising to meeting that qualification, that 1,000 hour.
I'm not totally sure I understood what you said. I'm sorry, Emily. The latter point. So, other municipalities, some have done this, some haven't, some are eligible?
Some are participating and some are not. We have, we've checked with some of our surrounding communities, and the city of Champaign does allow participation, Decatur and Normal, and McLean County do not, Peoria and Springfield do allow participation.
Essentially, it is the bigger cities, Champaign or Bana, Peoria, Springfield, where you probably do have larger constituencies that are participating.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, Alderman?
Second comment, real quickly.
Sure, and then Alderman.
I'll just finish my comments and suggest that, from one opinion, I would suggest a resolution of removing the opportunity to participate in the program, so we don't have to discuss it further.
Okay, well, at this point, we're not specifically acting...
I'm not asking for motion, I'm just saying, I think we ought to just take it off the table.
Although, I guess part of what I'm trying to suggest is that, I don't know that it would be that difficult to come up with a prototype week, but Alderman Painter?
Well, I just personally think I do work that many hours anyway. I have the first few months I've been here. However, I signed up for this to serve, and I really don't like the idea of taking more money out of a system that's already overburdened. Plus, we make so little, I can't imagine that what we would get back in retirement would amount to a hill of beans. So, I, I'm not really in favor of this.
You might get that proverbial bag of Doritos.
Anyway, those are my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Just as a clarification, when I was at the county, and I may have changed, county board members weren't necessarily, but if you had worked in a previous position with the county, like we had a coroner who then came back and then was able, who served a couple, a couple of terms, I think, on the county board, that was, they were able to combine that. So, the little piece of retirement wouldn't amount to a hill of beans, or maybe not even a bag of Doritos, but it could, in some cases, maybe be leveraged with other things, because someone's served in a variety of capacities. So, I will go to Alderman Black and then Milowambe.
I'm with Alderman Frune.
Alderman Milowambe.
Yes, I am too. I, so there's times where I'm wondering, you know, why are we doing this? But I'm also, one thing that I'm also curious about is whether those communities that you mentioned that are doing it, are doing it because the aldermen are more in a full-time capacity?
None of them are.
None of them are?
No.
Okay, because I seem to remember, I think Alderman Frune, at one point, you know, one document was circulating with, you know, different pay scales for aldermen, and some of them were significantly higher than where we were.
That's just because, well, the mayor's salary, I guess, hasn't gone up in 40 years, so it hasn't gone up much.
Okay. No, so I was just curious about that, then.
Sorry, Alderman Sage and then Lauer.
No, I would, I guess, you know, agree with Jim, and I think Scott said that, I think Johnny said that, I think Maboka said that. I mean, well, just standardize it, and like you said, I'm not, I didn't sign up for this to draw down on an already overburdened pension system, I think is what Johnny said, so, I mean, just, let's just take it off the books and be done with it and move on. We've got other things to do.
Alderman Lauer.
My first inclination is to agree with both Sage and Painter. However, I like to think outside the box and push the envelope here a little bit. Is there a benefit to the fund if we would be involved, and is there a way that we could strengthen the fund by making an additional investment personally?
The way that the pension fund works is, if you were to voluntarily participate, our employees, as you would, contribute 4.5% of your income, whatever your earnings are, towards IMRF. On the other end, the city would be contributing, based on the current calendar year's rate, 14.88% towards your pension plan, as they do for the employees. Now, that rate does change.
But can you fill me in on, is there an additional benefit to the fund if we were to be involved, or is there an addendum that an employee in general can fully vest himself or beyond that? In many of the private entities that I've worked for, there is a retirement fund, and you're allowed, and the employer will have a benefit, a certain percentage, similar to what the IMRF is, but the employee at times is also allowed to contribute more to his private retirement. Would there be a benefit to that, and is that even available here? I don't, I don't know.
To my knowledge, that is not available, Councilman.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. All righty. I think our discussion's finished, and our time is certainly beyond finished.
So, Mayor, based on the discussion here tonight, staff should prepare a resolution, then, to eliminate this?
I don't think, yeah, I think that's right.
To bring it back to the council for a future date? Is that correct?
I think that's, I think that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something to say?
I was just going to ask if the council wanted us to make sure the resolution was prepared and brought back on a council for, at a regularly scheduled meeting. We'll do that.
Great, thank you. And then we'll move right along to item 4C, which is private sewers, and I bet I know who I'm turning that over to. Mr. Karch.
Mayor, City Council, thank you so much. As I'm pulling this up, just like to lay out some high-level comments about what we're doing. What we're doing is, tonight, for 4C and 4D, we're going to be bringing to you some real-world issues operationally that we as a staff deal with, associated with two different masks... two different master plans that we've brought to you. First, before you in four C, is the sewer master plan. One of the issues that we deal with, and this is really why you're elected officials, that we need that direction from you as an elected body, to give us that clarity for our staff. So, right first, let's talk about private sewers. Whenever I talk about private sewers, what I mean is, where is that differentiation between when it's public responsibility and when it's private responsibility? And this is something that varies dramatically between different communities, across the state, across the country. So a lot of this ultimately is a policy-level decision that balances the impact between what customers want and the costs associated with that. And that item four D will also carry those same ramifications to it. So, as we talk about this, there are two main schools of thought I'll draw your attention to. The first one is where the public responsibility begins at the city right-of-way. And what I mean by that is, that right-of-way is typically standard, it is like behind the sidewalk, typically about a half, half of a foot behind the sidewalk, well beyond the curb, outside of the public right-of-way that has a lot of the, the utilities. And you can see that by the diagram up on the screen. What we find a lot is that, as we've looked at other communities, we've looked at a lot of other central Illinois communities, and this is more common, more in the northern communities around Chicago, where there even can be a clean-out at the right-of-way line to differentiate between where the private and the public stops. In central Illinois, including Champaign, Urbana, Peoria, more of the, the standard town of Normal, a lot of those communities, the private sewer laterals go all the way to the main. It differentiates between the actual sewer connection. Here at the city of Bloomington, our past has been, the previous corporate council, Todd Greenberg, had given us some direction that he felt our, our actual city code specifically said that the T and the sewer lateral was the, the responsibility of the homeowner. And since then, it's, it's not as clear, so we're going to be asking for some direction from that. We'd like some, to clarify our city code moving forward, that's one of the things we're going to be looking for. But as we continue on, there's a lot of ramifications that, that even you as aldermen get a lot of different emails, phone calls, especially in the older wards. You know, whenever we have a, a community of our age, whenever you have those sewer laterals, those sewer laterals, a lot of times are the clay, the old short sections, the two-foot clay, butted up against each other. And those fail, they separate, they have vertical separation, trees break into the, the sewer laterals, there's a lot of cost. What you see up on the screen are things that we as a staff see regularly, you know, the, the caves, you see the, you see a lot of the different barricades out on the streets, we even have an unfortunate picture where we have a, we've used this in a previous presentation to you, where a car, you know, literally fell in, we've had a bus fall into a cave-in before. These are not positive things, but, but ultimately, if it's clear that it's a public sanitary sewer main that has failed, city has always taken responsibility for that. The question that we need to get some clarity on, that staff needs on a daily basis, what about those sewer laterals? Where does the responsibility start and stop? So, we've really done a comprehensive report, I don't want to reiterate all of that to you. You can read that tonight, I want to make sure I'm clear, we're not asking for your clarity of direction tonight. We want to encourage council feedback, both tonight, ongoing, we'd recommend that we put this out on the internet, we gather input from our citizens, we then bring something back to the council later date to try to get some input from our council. We, right now, it's good for you to know what we do right now. Right now, as a staff, within the right-of-way, if there is, even though the, the city code i- is fairly, fairly clear that the lateral is the private property owner, it is theirs to fix. But if it has failed in the right-of-way, and it is impeding the safety of the traveling or the walking public, then the city has taken responsibility of that. That is more of a administrative, prior to our current city manager, that was kind of the direction even from previous administration. So we're now looking for, just to get some clarity on this. So if you look up at this picture, let me give you an example. You can see by the cursor, if there was a, if the sidewalk right here failed, if it was dipping, if it was dipping right there, because of a sewer lateral, that would fail, the city would say, well, that's impacting our traveling, our walking public, we'd fix that. If these, if right there, that truck, if there was a hole right where that truck is at, then we would, oh, that's, that's impacting our, you know, that, there was a pothole, a pothole caused by a sewer lateral, that actually would be something the city would try to fix. But if there was, in the right-of-way, right now currently, if in the grass portion, that parkway, between the sidewalk and the back of curb, in this area that left barricade, if there was a, if there was a cave-in there associated with a sewer lateral, right now we send a letter to the homeowner and say, hey, we want to let you know, your private sewer lateral is causing an issue in the right-of-way, please fix it. And so, obviously, citizens don't want that. You have to balance, there's a lot of citizens, that this is an extreme burden on them. Most of their homeowners association, most of their homeowner policies, insurance policies don't cover this type of work. So these are costs they're not ready to assume. It's good to know that many other communities, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of different practices that other communities do. Other communities will encourage, like, American Water or Nycor, different utility companies, that come in and say, if you pay us, we'll insure your sewer lateral. There are options for our citizens out there, but we don't currently, as a city, promote. So there are some options also as an alternative. The overall cost for these is very difficult for us to assess. You know, you'll notice in the report, there, there are numbers out there that we really don't feel comfortable with as far as, what type of liability is the city taking on? We really struggled with this as a staff because you don't know. It is impossible to truly assign a cost if the city took the laterals. You'll notice there are a lot of different options, from everything, from everything in the right-of-way the city will take, and you'll see questions up on the screen right now that we type, we pose in this report. We, we kind of offer everything from, whose responsibility is that? Where does that cost lie? Is that the city's to bear? Well, you know, there's a lot of costs that the city could be adding to it. As part of that sewer master plan, we, we talk about a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars in projected costs over the next twenty years of identified need. Well, those type of costs are real and, and expensive for us as a rate, so we have to also balance, what are we taking as a, as a city for being responsible for? So, again, I'll summarize by saying tonight, there are a lot of different practices out there by many different communities. If you ask for a best management practice, there is not a consistent one out there. This ultimately comes down to a level of the council, what the overall governing body feels comfortable with as far as accepting liability, accepting cost, and also balancing customer service. So at this point, I'd like to just take any feedback, there's so many different things we could talk about with this.
Who wants to touch this one first?
Well, I've got some personal experience with this.
Alderman Lauer, of course.
I had two, two, yes, thank you. At two residents on Wood Street, right after and during the time that I ran, we had a waterline blowout, and it removed both water lines from two of the homes, the neighbors was washed out as well. I think you and I talked about this initially very early on. And it also took out both sewer lines, and so it was a, a large expense to both homeowners. And one was able to get some public funding, apparently through a grant, one was able to use some other collateral, because neither one of the homes had enough equity to refinance and, and, and take care of the issue. And so, we've got, you know, we basically had two properties that were in major duress financially. And so, the balance to this is, yes, the, the city may have some liability, but on the other hand, how many homes are we going to foreclose on if we have people that have those types of issues, especially in our older neighborhoods? There's a balance here. Thank you.
It's important for everybody to know too, that there have been times in the past, community development, if you reach a certain ability of financial need, they have been also been able to help in the past with either overhead sewer costs, you know, to, to install one of those or to help with-
Or CBG money?
Yes, exactly. Correct, Mayor.
Actually, I think, you know, to Alderman Lauer's point, do we know of any one who may have had their home foreclosed because they've had to pay these kinds of things?
I'm not aware of any, but that does not mean that they're not out there.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alderman Black and Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jim, a great presentation. And what I want to focus on is, I guess I'll, I'll make a few comments. I know you're not soliciting feedback right now, but I'll go ahead and just kind of give my preliminary thoughts, which is, my, the two questions that are ringing in my ear here are right up here. So when we talk about fixing issues on the right-of-way, you know, in the older neighborhoods, you have a lot of people who, this happens more frequently, and the houses aren't valued as high, and so this is a huge burden on those folks, and so going to the lowest bidder becomes a very viable option. So the quality of work is something that I'm, I'm concerned about. One thing that I also wanted to, to throw out there is, perhaps there, we can create at some point a fund of, of some sort to, to pay for this issue, maybe having a, an ability for people to round up on their water bill, and that money goes into a fund that people who have these types of problems, that need some assistance can get at, that's more on a voluntary basis, because, you know, say your water bill is, I don't know, a hundred and, a hundred and five dollars and thirty cents, you can put seventy cents in that fund and across the city, that should generate some revenue.
City of Rock Island does that.
Yeah. So that's something that's, there's a model for that kind of thing. And I think a lot of citizens would be happy to participate in that, that sort of thing on a voluntary basis, plus create some revenue. That being said, to me, this is a two-step dance, if you will. The first step would be that we, we determine where that line is, but I think the funding comes later. I think if we are willing to make that, that determination, we want to make it the right-of-way. I think as a council, we need to be ready to, to either look at some fees or some drastic cuts. So that's something as, as a council, we'll need to keep in mind. And finally, I'll just note that, as you, you mentioned putting this up on the website, just listen to public feedback, you may want to partner with Nora for some Facebook. I know that there is a number of neighborhood associations, especially on, on the west side, who have, very developed, very robust, that would love to get this, and I'm sure she'll be happy to, to team up with you on that one.
Good feedback, thank you. Anything else? Alderman Sterns, and then we're about out of time. Thanks.
Thank you. We have used, of course, CDB, CDBG funds for this.
Correct.
And that's something that was extremely welcome, in terms of helping, you know, accessing this federal fund to help a resident who truly could not afford to even finance their own service, you know, even their part of it. Just, just a, a comment, being, having seen this come up, and having talked with citizens, I am really disappointed that we would even think about charging citizens for the, the part of the sewer that is in the public right-of-way. I think that is our responsibility. I think we've set a precedent in doing it, and I think, just ethically, morally, in terms of service, in terms of the tax level that our citizens pay, which is getting higher and very significant. I think we really shouldn't even think about asking them to pay for that, because it's just very burdensome. It might not happen, I, I can't even fathom the impact on property values, and, and as Scott mentioned, you know, this is an older neighborhood issue, typically. So that's another, you know, burden we're placing on people who want to live in the older neighborhoods and who invest in them, who should be, you know, who should be valued and even rewarded in a way, because how on earth are we going to maintain our inner core District Eighty-seven neighborhoods if we just continue to burden? And I, really, it, it's true for all of our neighborhoods though, but I think, I think it would be a little heavier in those areas of less financially able people. So, I mean, this is a concept that I'm not, I'm not a fan of. Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, can we go ahead and move on to carriage walks? Jim, may as well stay up. So item four D, the wonderful whimsical world of carriage walks, if you can clarify, and just as, just to clarify, Alderman Black and I, and Jim Karch went out to Ward Seven in the area near Lee and Emerson, kind of walked around, and I think you had brought a camera crew there from WMBD?
Yeah.
The day before, because there are, I guess there's a wide range of everything in that, rated sidewalks from tens down to twos and everything in between, and we could kind of see that, and then we, we walked with some of the residents and the leaders from the neighborhood association. So thank you, Jim, for, for coming out and helping to explain that. And it was also more graphically presented, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, tonight also, the other thing we're going to be talking about is, as part of that sidewalk master plan, one of the key issues with that are carriage walks, service ways. They, they basically are, as you look up on the screen, they're that private sidewalk that is between the public sidewalk that runs along the street and the back of curb. And so it's, it's good for us all to know what that is. In many of the newer parts of town, they, they're not there, and the older parts of town, they're part of the historic culture of what makes us Bloomington. Across, again, this, even then, as we talk about this, as I, I was at an Illinois Public Works Association meeting, part of Illinois Municipal League, I was, I was at that meeting, and we, we brought up the issue of carriage walks, and I said, well, what, what does everybody do with carriage walks? And you had the extreme, all the way across the board, from folks that said, Decatur, we, we just ignore them, we don't touch them, I don't care what condition they're in, to the Edwardsville, we tear them out as soon as we see them, we really just don't like them, period. To the Downers Grove, Downers Grove is something that we looked at, and I think we, we're making a modification to something that is in the draft sidewalk master plan, and that's kind of what we're bringing to you. Last week, Public Works presented the, the sidewalk master plan to our city council, it is now on the web, we're starting to receive feedback on that, but we told you in that presentation, one of the issues that we're going to be changing are, are the carriage walk, kind of that recommendation with that. And so, we want to talk quickly, carriage walks are such a unique thing because they're not all the same. You might visual just, just one piece of, of sidewalk, but where, this is kind of a pictorial, quick pictorial stride through carriage walks. You can see, you know, some of them are, are put right on the angle, you have stepping stones, you have just some regular steps, some are very new, they use them for their, their carts out of the new system. And then some are not new, they're actually deteriorated, you have displacement, you have them failing. There, there are some that are very historic in nature, we even have some with, still with the hitching posts right beside them. And then there are others that just are in complete disrepair in our, in our public right-of-way. One of the issues of carriage walks are where, where they get put, because if they're put up against the back of the curb, a lot of times you'll notice, if you start paying attention to, to carriage walks, a lot of them, if they're put right behind the back of curb, there's no curb there. Because over time, those carriage walks are pushed on the, on the curb and actually busted it out, and you'll see that on the picture right there, that technical term of busting out, but nonetheless, it is still exactly what happens. So you'll see that's been removed and they're no longer there. Difficulty for our drivers at times, for our snowplow drivers, a lot of them, even the more beautiful historic ones, can be caught by a snowplow. Our drivers typically do have a curb guard with the snowplow, and we, we ride up against that curb, and that can cause issues operationally for us doing that. But everybody uses it, from, from dogs, people, a lot of handicapped, of our citizens really say that they need that, they use those. And so again, you'll see with our new automated cart program, they're used often, we see that be in use, but again, there are some that are just in very, very poor condition. So what we wanted to bring to you as a modification was, what Downers Grove, what we saw was an encroachment license, as I, you know, we reached, we looked out and saw what others did. We saw that they actually have an encroachment, encroachment license that has been modified now to fit city Bloomington by our corporate council, and what we're looking at is, this would be tied to the title. It's something a little bit different, and the benefit of that is that this would prevent, if you sell your home and, and, you know, one person signs it, but they're gone, this is now tied to the title. And so that is an added benefit for, you know, just exposure for the city. Because again, in the right-of-way, the, the city, we want to be careful about how safe it is for our citizens, both, you know, walking, making sure that it's, it's careful, you know, with the, the getting conveyed across that private, you know, their private carriage walk on a public right-of-way, there's exposure for the city, we want to make sure that we're, allow safe practices for our citizens. There's one particular individual, she was a, a woman that was really nice, she was a, a sweet woman, she really struggled handicap-wise, she, but she couldn't even get across her carriage walk though, because it was just in such poor disrepair, but she needed it, she used it, but we had to actually come out and help her as we were out there trying to get across her carriage walk. So there's such a, a balance of needs here, and as always, that cost component is one of the core things, of where does that cost burden lie? So as we look at this, notification is a big thing. We look at this, we want to make sure moving forward, whenever we come up against, all of this is subject to whatever the council would like to do. One of the things we've done in the past is, we look at carriage walks when we experience carriage walks, we don't go after carriage walks, we don't, we're not looking for it, we have enough trouble of our own, let alone trying to seek out issues. But whenever we're doing, whenever we're doing the work along the, the curb, the resurfacing, then we want to take a look, what's adjacent to it? Let's, as we talk about that block-by-block mentality. So we, we notify owners that there's a potential with their carriage walk, what would they like to do? Many property owners actually are fine with removing them, they're, they're fine with that, and that's our preference, because it's in the public right-of-way, and if they're, if they're in disrepair, we'll remove them. Those, those are not issues. And, and we would say the vast majority of people, that's the case. It really became more of an issue this last year when we had ten million dollars of bond for our streets, and we did so much more work right now, that it, we're really impacting a lot more people in the, the older parts of town that have the carriage walks. And so that's really what made this issue more come to the forefront as we move forward with the sidewalk master plan. So, and we look at the owner being notified, here are the two different ways for this, this tree to go, on the left side, they decline to obtain an encroachment license, we can remove that carriage walk. But if they say, "Hey, I would like this to stay, I'd like to, I'm willing to sign this encroachment license, that's not a problem, we can tie this to the title." Then here's where some, some decisions need to be made. Do we allow the carriage walk to stay as is if it still needs to be replaced? Or does the city repair it? Or do we have the citizen repair it? You know, where does that cost come from? Who bears that? So, there's, you know, the three different options are, do we, do we just leave it as is, even if it's in disrepair? Does the city come in and try to do those repairs? Or do we require the homeowner to make repairs, to make it a safe conveyance for people to get across? And so, then we, we would encourage the owner to assume all upkeep, liability, future repair and replacement in the right-of-way. Because if it's a carriage walk in the right-of-way, it would be similar to a driveway approach. A driveway approach is a private conveyance for a vehicle. And so, in the same way, we, we wouldn't as a city be taking on the responsibility of removing and replacing the driveways. And this would be something similar. So, again, the key with this is that if sold, new property owner would inherit that encroachment license. It's tied to the title. And the last picture we just wanted to show was making sure we're sensitive to the historic zoning in the city. S4, our S4 exemptions. How do we want to deal with that? We have some beautiful parts, parts in the city of Bloomington to where we want to make sure we partner in some way with the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission. But does that, what does that entail? Does that entail the city taking responsibility, that we allow them to stay in whatever condition they're in? All of these are policy-level decisions that, that really have a cost component and a customer service component. So, tonight, again, we're introducing this issue. It is part of the sidewalk master plan. We'll be placing this information out on the web, along with the sidewalk master plan, for additional discussion. We know that many of your wards, this has been one of the issues that they really wanted to talk about. And any questions that you have now?
We've got about 10 minutes for discussion, comment, and we'll see who wants to weigh in. Going to start again with Alderman, Fruen, Black, and Sterns.
Jim, the only thing that pops in my mind with regard to if we do get involved in fix and repair is what pops in my mind is the policy we have on mailboxes. So, we have a level of participation. And some of the pictures you showed, some of these Victorian or older homes that have the, the unique design, I mean, those could be very, very costly to repair them to the state that they began in. So, I don't know what that means, but I think there has to be some limit on what we would participate in if we do participate.
And just to clarify that, we could, we could do that as a 50-50? I mean, anything like that is a policy decision?
It's ultimately a policy-level decision.
Alderman Black and Sterns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jim, for coming out with us last week. That was excellent. And, you know, a lot of people will say that the city doesn't care, it's impossible if the city held. Jim's an example of who will come out the neighborhoods and walk it and show us specifically what the issues are, how it impacts these neighborhoods and how it impacts our infrastructure. When it comes to this, I guess I have a couple of questions. If you can go back to the slide with the process. Okay, so the owner is notified. I would assume if there's no response, period, it would, where would that fall? Would that fall into?
Great question. We actually would, we would recommend two different approaches for notification. Obviously, we would about, we would try to say 30 days out, we would send a letter, not just to the property, the information from the property assessor's office, but also resident. You know, there's, there's multiple different ways to reach people. And then we'd send a follow-up letter if we don't hear from them, just saying, "If we don't hear from you, here's the type of action we would have to take." And ultimately, again, that can be a policy-level decision as well. But from a staff perspective, it's, part of that depends on what condition that's in. If we don't have an encroachment license to allow them to stay there, staff would really recommend to not allow that to remain. So, we would also try to make contact with them by knocking on doors, doing as much as we can. But yes, ultimately, at the end.
Sure. So, okay, thank you. And then number two would be, the reason anybody would want an encroachment license, does that matter? So, you, do you have to meet certain criteria to, to get an encroachment license? Or can you just say, "I want it," and that's, that's the, that's the only reason I want it? Do you understand my question?
I'm sorry.
So, let's, let's pretend that I, I have, whatever my reason might be. You know, whether I just like the way that it looks or I physically use it to, you know, put my trash cans down there, whatever that might be.
Yes.
Do I have to have a rationale for keeping it?
That's a good question. We're proposing that there not be any rationale tied to it. Because you might want to keep it for, you know, you're a handicap person that wants to get to your vehicle, you, you want to put it for your carts out there, you want to use it for whatever, whatever need you might have. You know, we're not tying rationale to it under recommendation.
And I guess also, do we care if they're going to assume responsibility?
I would say no. That's my opinion, but, okay. And then I, I'm sorry, I have a bunch of questions here. This has been a big one in Ward 7. So, for, for the ones that have already been removed as part of the, the last round that we did and the ones that have, you know, been submitted to be removed, where are they going to be in this process? Is there going to be a, a point at which they're reassessed and maybe an encroachment license may come back? Or would it be like, if you had it removed, would it come to the council and maybe fund to replace that?
Currently, staff is recommending that as a future date, once the council, once we move forward and allow this encroachment license, because right now, we don't have the funding. You'll, you'll, you'll notice that this next council meeting, you're going to see that we're going to be coming back and asking for additional funding for sidewalk requests that are, that are failing because we're out of, we're out of funds this year already. And so, there have been a lot of sidewalk requests. So, right now, we don't have the funds to replace some of the ones that were taken out. But we think after we have some direction from the city council on the encroachment license and like, we'd go back, get the encroachment license signed, and then we would replace those, those carriage walks. We think that would be a reasonable response based upon council direction ultimately.
Sure. And my final question, and thank you for indulging me, is, you know, we, we get to the point where the owner signs the encroachment license and we determine there needs to be some fixes that are made. Let's pretend either way, either we're paying for it or they're paying for it. Who determines at that point if it's up to code or is, is, how does that, that process move forward?
And ultimately, even that is really a policy-level decision. Because does the council, with anything with the city, there's exposure tolerance.
Sure.
I'll say it that way, and there's probably a better legal term, but I'll say exposure tolerance for a council. What level do you want to allow? You know, we, we talk about the bike master plan, for example. Some councils would say that having any bike on the road is an exposure, but that there's some quality of life benefits associated with that. So, this same principle would apply here. That do we want to allow them just to stay as they are? Because a lot of people, if they kept them in, we had people say, "No, no, no, it's okay. Don't touch them, they're fine just as they are. We don't care what, what shape they're in. We're fine to jump over the, the vertical displacements." But, but there's a level of, of, you know, exposure with the city that what is that tolerance for, for a council?
Thank you, Jim. Alderman Sterns.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I also had a TV crew out taking pictures, Channel 31 on Tuesday. Was it Channel 31 that you were with Scott? Was it Jacob? Jacob, yeah. Well, apparently, he wanted to come back for more. I didn't get very much notice when I, when I got him out there. But they got some great pictures over on Douglas and all around. Just a couple of things. I would, first and foremost, I've already said, they are a historical element of an, of a Victorian or an arts and crafts or some of the historically significant architecture we have in our city. They're a critical element. I took some pictures that I will email out to council, some other pictures. Actually, I had some of the same ones. I don't think we should even think about just confining whatever we do as a city to S4. Because there are so many, many, many wonderful historic properties that are not in S4 for a lot, for a lot of reasons. We don't really have that much S4. And a lot of property owners don't, you know, can't spot zone or don't want to for whatever reason. So, I, I wouldn't do that. The, it is true, a lot of them are in very bad shape. However, walking around our city, a lot of our sidewalks are in, you know, deplorable shape. And that's, you know, something you're addressing. And that's great. But I can't fathom that we're going to force our citizens to fix their, you know, their carriageway or to take them out and kind of ruin the character of that sidewalk, unless they want them gone. Can't fathom that we're going to force the citizen to spend their money to restore or fix them. But yet, we as a city, you know, and, and no blame at all placed here, but we can't fix all of our streets. We certainly can't fix all of our sidewalks. We, you know, we don't have the financial resources to just do it. And a lot of them don't have the financial resources. So, I don't think that's a fair approach to start forcing people to spend money on these things. Yeah, a lot of them are in bad shape. Yeah, there's a risk. There's also a risk for a lot of our sidewalks, a lot of our streets, et cetera, et cetera. You know, people are always telling me, even with parks, "Look at this over here, isn't there a big risk for the city?" Well, I guess. But we tolerate a lot of risk. And I, I do not, I'm not a fan of forcing our citizens to fix their parkway at all. But I am a fan of allowing them to keep them. I think it would be wonderful if we had a program to maybe help them develop them. And finally, in my comments, I just want to put in a plug for the historic elements of our city that I think we really fail to value on a very frequent basis in terms of our, our neighborhoods, our inner-city neighborhoods. If you look around the country and get a perspective, or even the city of Bloomington, what do we put on our travel brochures? What does CVB tout, talk about? What kind of pictures do we put out there? The Davis Mansion, the Franklin Park, a lot of the, you know, some of the beautiful historic buildings at Westland. That has, it has charm, it has class, it has character. People love that. But here we go, you know, kind of failing to value and appreciate and respect those people who have invested and are willing to live in areas that do suffer blight, they do suffer crime. And yet, they, they love the historic elements of Bloomington and want to somehow, just by their presence, preserve them. So, that's my take on carriage walks. Leave them alone. If people truly want them gone, and I'm sure a lot of people do, some people do, if we really as a city want to spend money on that. But please don't force people to fix them or force them to do anything that they can't afford to do. Because affordability is a huge issue in our city. And I think, you know, God bless them for just being there. So, anyway, thank you.
So, I think you, you've got some direction for developing some policy options as we move forward?
I do, if I could. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, two, two things really quick. I'd also still like to make sure to point out, we do have some staff in the audience that have continued to help with a lot of our infrastructure stuff. We really do thank them for coming and continue to participate. And then the last thing, just to caveat all this with our master plans, with the sewer services, with the private sewers, with the sidewalks, the costs of all these things. As we continue to move forward, making sure that there are many things we can do and just making sure that we look at the funding associated with them moving forward. So, I thank you for your continued support of what Public Works is doing. It is appreciated and we'll get there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks. Now, we're going to move right along. And we're still going to come back. You don't have anything to add here, Mike? I mean, man, Mike. Delegation of authority. We have the Illinois High Speed Rail Chicago-St. Louis impacts on Bloomington, plan changes to Miller Street and Six Points Road. We just want to give you a little exercise there, Jim.
I shouldn't have sat down. This actually is very brief. All this is going to be is a quick update about an email that I received from the Illinois Department of Transportation, letting us know that preliminarily, the high-speed rail is looking at changing two of the crossings in Bloomington to a future construction for Six Points and Miller. I'll say that again, Six Points and Miller. You'll, you'll see in your packets, the previous presentation we provided. I'm not going to go through that again. But at your leisure, you can look at again, Six Points and Miller, those two crossings, they would be looking at doing the actual road improvements that we think are very positive and, and needed. They're looking at doing those in a later construction phase. So, while they're looking to continue to move forward with Washington and Market, it would be Six Points and Miller they'd be looking at doing later. We don't have any additional information past that. We're going to be trying to find out information. We thought it'd be beneficial for the council as a whole to hear this quick update. Thank you.
Okay. Just if, just if you wait one second. I mean, I guess now that you're 40, we want to give you exercise. But we have a question here from Alderman Sage.
Why the change?
That's a great question. That's what we actually, they, they had said in, is a very brief email, only a few sentences. All it said was that the funding, where they're hitting now that they're moving forward with construction, they're, they don't have, as always, the, you know, many of us, many times we do construction projects, our eyes are bigger than our stomach. And, and I would assume that in this case, it was something similar to that, that they, they had, they had wanted to do all of these improvements. And then they found after they, they got cost back and they look at it, they don't have enough money to do all of them. Staff is going to be trying to find out a couple of things. I'll just let you know. Staff is going to be trying to find out who else had their crossings pulled, what other crossings were pulled, how much is short, what are their options, and what kind of timing to do the remainder of those crossing improvements? Because all of those truly, staff believes are needed. We, we worked very hard with the high-speed rail to try to get those.
Absolutely. And, you know, forgive me if I don't take that pledge of the state coming back around at a later date to, to finance that at, at full face value. Is this, is this a decision that we have input in? In other words, there, there are decisions we make, there are decisions we influence, there are decisions we're told about. Which one of these is that?
At this point, I actually don't know. And that's why what we're doing is giving you some preliminary notice. We will be trying to find out more. A very fair question. What I think would be a fair thing to, to let the group, let our council, the mayor and council know is that if we believe there to be any benefit to the council weighing in on this issue and providing any support, we would definitely take that back to you and even let you know if that is not the case. But it's, it's, it's good to kind of continue to have you aware because this is a project that definitely impacts our citizens.
Yeah, I wouldn't be real quick, I mean, personally, to roll over very quickly on, on the Six Points and Miller street crossings, particularly one of those being, you know, a very, a very high-traffic crossing. And, and, yeah, keep us in the loop.
Understood.
Jim, just real quick, is there anything, have you, I'm sure you have, and I'm just going to cover. In conjunction with what they're doing, is there cost savings if we would add to or extend, say, a sidewalk or part of the right-of-way or, you know, anything that we could do to, to capitalize on what they are doing?
I'm sure they would let us pay for it and we don't have the funds to do that.
I understand that, but if we did it, I'm looking at a time cost in terms of, in terms of the project, rather than have to do it seven years down the road. See what I'm saying?
I do. I think it's important to revisit what we had told the council last time. Washington is a good example of what we were trying to do, Alderman Law. Just like you were indicating, we saw an opportunity there because of some need for right-of, within the railroad right-of-way, there was some additional failed pavement that is very difficult to fix. And, and we said, "While you're there, we want to, we want to get in there and fix that." So, we're actively doing that. That is one of the key things we're doing. But, but, you know, we'll take, and we'll take that feedback that we expected. We expected the council would feel very strongly about these. But it is good to hear the council feels very strongly about these crossings and will convey that appropriately to, to Illinois Department of Transportation and the high-speed, high-speed rail project.
Okay. We also have a question from, or comment from Alderman Fruen.
Very quickly, this reminds me of our annual legislators session we have in the spring or whenever that is. We seem like we take a look forward and look back and we don't necessarily talk about any current issues. I don't know if this doesn't qualify for one of those current issues, whether it's from the manager's office or the mayor's office that indicates, we've got this letter indicating these two crossings are going to be delayed. Dear State Rep., Senator, can you help us understand this? I think this is that reaction, that classic case of you need to help us now so we don't end up talking about this or asking you whatever happened a year from now. So, that's what I would do, either from the mayor's office or the manager's office, send a letter.
Okay?
Thank you all for your feedback.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. We have the railroad murals on Market Street Bridge. And I know who wants to speak first, and that is Alderman Black. And I don't see anybody else, so. And Alderman Schmidt isn't here, so I guess you have to carry the water on this one.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the idea of why I wanted to bring this to the table is that, as you know, that is part of the high-speed rail, they're going to be looking at the Market Street Bridge. And there's a mural that's down there and I, I think everybody's been passed there. And that mural has a lot of value to the neighborhood and that it's been, I've been reached out to a number of times by various groups of people who are interested in keeping it there. And it's, it's in my war, but it kind of borders Karen's. So, we've been working together on this one. And I wanted to get some council buy-in on what the next steps were on this. So, because we had to move very quickly, because we're not sure specifically what exact date it's going to be taken out. So, we want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row so we can move forward. And so, I'd be happy to solicit some feedback and I don't know if anybody in, in the audience would want to weigh in on this issue. Because this is one that I was very surprised at how frequently it came up. People were emailing me, calling me about it because it touches a nerve. I mean, it's part of the neighborhood and it's part of the character. So, right now, based on the discussion, Karen and I went out there with a couple artists and, and interested parties and we talked about options. And one thing that we were discussing was taking a, a high-resolution picture of the mural. a high-resolution picture of the mural. And then there are actually designs where you can project it onto the new wall, and then you can recreate it. And that's something that we were thinking that would be a good way of doing it, getting the community engaged. Karen had mentioned that in the past, they had youth that came out and helped paint it, so they can point to, you know, the section of the mural that they created. There's apps right now that you have on, on one's phone, where you can actually get the exact color that matches it, so we can get the right paint and order it properly. And one of the suggestions that we had put forward was, on the other side of the, of Market Street, we would have a new mural, kind of, you know, an old and a new type approach. And knowing this counsel, I think that the first question you're gonna ask is, what about the cost for this, which is a very reasonable question. And at this point, we have no desire to take and use any taxpayer dollars for this. We'd raise that privately, short of maybe using staff time to handle some of the legal stuff or some logistics for it. So I'm just kinda interested to hear what people's feedback is, if that's the direction that we're comfortable going, so we can get moving on it and make it happen.
Okay. Well, we have 10 minutes budgeted, so we probably got about seven left. Yes, Alderwoman Sterns.
Well, Scott, I'd like to thank you for, you know, working on this. That's my grandmother and my great-grandparents' neighborhood, and the tracks, all of it is just an integral part of it. And I spent a lot of time there as a child. I thoroughly support and would love to be of help if I can in any, in any way, you know. So I'm, I'm applauding you, and I'm looking forward to seeing this, this whole thing come about. Thank you. We'll get you a paintbrush.
Okay. Alderwoman Painter, and then Fruen.
Well, thank you. I think it's a really good idea. Go for it.
Okay. Alderman Fruen.
That'd be my statement, too. I think we're all supportive of this, and I don't think it takes 10 of us to get it accomplished. And I think I said that in an email that we ought to have Scott and Karen spearhead it. It also reminds me of an email, I think it was from Sue, wasn't it, that she had some experience with railroad before and a crossing before, perhaps in Lincoln. And I applaud you for not asking for public dollars and to see if you could get done with private dollars, but better yet, if the railroad would pay for it, or whatever that experience that Sue has, let's, let's look into that. I mean, we can learn from her.
Sue, go ahead.
Yeah, just to add on what he was saying, we actually had this exact issue in Lincoln, where we had a mural that was painted by the community, and it was half-destroyed, where they took, like, blocks out, you know, to do repairs. And it was the UP. It was part of all their high-speed rail work or preparation. And so we actually went to the UP and the contractor, and they donated monies to help us hire local artists to come in and recreate those blocks that had been destroyed. So I'm sure that they would be more than happy, or I'm speaking for them, we haven't reached out just yet, but they seem to be willing to work with communities on, on, you know, murals such as this. So I'm happy. I've been trying to get the contact information, so that we can reach out to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Any questions, Sue? Alderman Lombe.
Yeah. My question for Scott is, how, how are you going to solicit funds? You know, this is not a, it doesn't have to be a neighborhood kind of thing. I mean, I'm sure there's others in the community who might be interested in participating.
Well, I appreciate your willingness to participate, Mboka. That's very kind of you. You know, actually, it's kind of interesting. A lot of people have come forward offering up funds already, because this is such a part of their, their connection to the neighborhood. And so I, I think that, you know, you never take fundraising for granted, but, you know, once we kind of get laid out, you know, kind of a budget, what we're gonna be needing, I was surprised that we were talking to a mural expert who had noted that I was thinking, you know, what's this project gonna cost, you know, 15,000? I have no idea. She's like, oh, please, it'll be like a third of that, if, on the high end. So it's not as much money as I would imagine, and then I wanna make sure that we do it right, because as I understand, when the mural was put up, there was a lacquer that wasn't quite put on there, so it decayed a little quicker. So I wanna make sure we do it on a long term, so, you know, future generations can enjoy it.
Alderman Sage.
Yeah, I think the process you've laid out, Scott, is, is good. I mean, let's keep less cooks out of the kitchen with this, right? I mean, do it. And, and thanks again for your leadership, and I know Karen, for her leadership as well, too, because I know she's been primarily involved, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're gonna move right along to our item, excuse me, F, not F, 4G, and that's a draft website transparency policy. And if I could just, and we have Mr. Jurgens coming up, just summarize a little bit for the record and for the audience, if you have the packet. This has been something that we have talked about for quite a while. I've had interns working on it. We've had staff working on it. We've had lots of people. We, mostly, we, very early on, made some dramatic progress in transparency. We went from a 50 from the Illinois Policy Institute to nearly a 90 in the course of about eight months. And we wanna try to make sure that we codify that and commit ourselves to a variety of things in this as we move forward. So just in terms of the main things, the policies that we have, this is a minimum standard. We're not saying that this is as far as we're going. We just never wanna go below this. And many of these were provided in terms of guidelines by the Illinois Policy Institute. We are committing to doing this as of September 1, 2014, and this involves a variety of things that are already on our website now, the contact information, including name, department, office for elected and administrative officials, meeting information, of course, consistent with the Open Meetings Act, so people know when we have them, having our agenda, and we've had a couple of issues with those over time, and our, our packets and minutes available at a minimum of four years and after completion. And then, of course, audio recordings, video recordings will be on for at least one calendar year after the city council meeting. There should be clear processes for asking for FOIA requests if you need them. But if, if we do our job right, there should be a fair amount of basic things, so you don't have to fill out a FOIA for, at least if you're looking for things like budget information. Over five years, our city's financial audits, to make sure that that's on there. It's user-friendly. Expenditures, that is bi-monthly claims report, as well as five years after the fact, or, you know, keeping a record for five years. Salary and benefits, total compensation for everyone in, in the city. The, and then, of course, all vendor contracts in excess of $25,000, current union contracts, we're all bargaining units, and then obviously all tax fee information, to make sure that that's all out there, and that it's easily, easily accessible on the web. So those are the critical elements of this transparency policy. And as part of this, of course, just the broader movement toward transparency, we do have, as I've talked about, the mayoral open house. You don't have to make an appointment. And if you wanna make an appointment, I've never turned anybody down. Anybody can see the mayor, right? You wanna come in, I may not have an hour to give you, but, and sometimes it might be 15 minutes, but you can kind of, you can come on in at any point. So that, plus making sure that people know that they're heard, that we get back to them. I may not always have, or a city manager or a city attorney may not always have good news to tell you, but that we get back to you in a timely manner, to make sure that the, a culture of, of service, and a culture that we are interested in making sure that you know exactly what's going on in your government as much as possible, is, is what we're pursuing. So this is, to some degree, codifying much of what we have already done over the last year and some, and to ensure that this is a policy goal that is a floor. We never go, we're never gonna go back to the previous ways. I'm sorry, Jeff, and I won't take my four-minute diatribe or whatever away, or whatever that was, from others. But I'll turn that over to you, and we'll start our time roughly from now.
Yeah, just, just real quick to add, add to that. We did model this, to some degree, after the 10-point checklist that the Illinois Policy Institute had, had provided. There have been other communities that have adopted a similar format, where they basically adopt a policy that then goes through, you know, trying to categorize these 10 different things, and what's going to be included in there. In a lot of situations, we're already meeting these things, meeting these standards. We've got more information up than what we're even saying in the policy. This will be a minimum. This will be a floor. But there are a couple of areas where we're gonna work to improve things. And I just kinda wanna highlight, right now on the website, we already have this transparency button, and so that will stay. And when you click on that, it brings you up to kind of-
It was a magnifying glass. I'm sorry. I was trying to figure out what.
Yes. So, so when you, when you come on that, it's got these different subjects. Eventually, the plan is to categorize these after the 10 points that we've got within this policy. So it'll be very easy for people to know where information is, and they can either refer to the policy and say, okay, I wanna know this, you know, this is where I need to go under the transparency portal. This is what's gonna be included under that subheading. So we're gonna clean this up a little bit, if, if this is the direction that the council wants to go. And a lot of the information, you know, that, that we're talking about here is already on here. For example, you know, we talked about the meeting information. We've already added, you can, you know, see it by calendar, if you want it that view or the list view. And then you can just click on the specific meeting and get the agenda and the packet, all those kinds of things. And then those, those stay with on the website. There's a lot of information that's in this policy that's on the website, but it would not be very easy to find it necessarily on the website. So what this policy does is help, you know, clarify where it's gonna be on this transparency portal, and there'll be direct links to that information. So if you're wanting to look for payrolls and bills, you're wanting to look for information on taxes, you know, or the contact information for department heads and elected officials, all that will be a little bit cleaner and a little bit more detailed within this, this portal here. So the, the one thing that we don't necessarily have on here, that we're gonna be moving towards, is the contracts. It's a little bit bigger job to get all of the contracts on the website. So they've already started that to some degree, but, you know, as of the effective date, we'd start a process to get all of the contracts scanned in and just start doing that on a routine basis. We'd get those categorized and get those searchable, you know, to the extent we've got the resources to do that. That's really the one thing that we don't have on here now, that will be kind of a major addition to the website. And as you said, it's our hope that this might actually lower the FOIA requests that the city gets. If we make the information easy for people to find, get the information on the website, hopefully people will rely more on that than simply submitting a request to the city. So, may I answer any questions?
Questions, comments by members of the city council?
Alderman Lauer. Jeff, just really something simple, and you and I have talked about this for months now. Why are we not proposing an ordinance? It seems to me that we're only going halfway there. We've got a policy that we can kind of take or leave, and there's no meat on, on the bone here. I would think that if we're gonna do this, let's, let's do it. Let's make it a city ordinance and, and abide by that. And I know we have a history of breaking some ordinances as well. So I, I would hope that we can avoid doing that in the future, and I would hope that we would maintain not only the policy, but an actual ordinance.
Yeah, just to that, we, you certainly can adopt it by an ordinance. I'm typically more accustomed to policies being adopted by resolution, and an ordinance being actually something you're, you know, putting in the city code or something like that. But we certainly could adopt this by ordinance. The other communities that I looked at, you know, they, they just did a similar, you know, resolution to adopt the policy. But, you know, if it's the consensus that you'd rather, you know, adopt this by ordinance, we can certainly easily-
Is there really disadvantage to us abiding by ordinance? Just, just a different way of committing us to this goal?
To me, if you guys adopt this policy, this, this is the city's policy, whether it's ordinance or resolution, and so it doesn't-
We could conceivably be sued or whatever if we didn't follow it.
Well, I, you know, I think that would probably be a little bit of a stretch either way, but we could certainly-
Even if it were an ordinance?
Yes. Yeah, but we could certainly, you know, the, the policy's a, the policy that's adopted by the city, so.
So essentially, it's probably a semantic difference, but if there are any concerns, there's no reason why we shouldn't just adopt an ordinance?
No, I, no, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Right. Again, and if, if in the eyes of anybody, they, they seem to think that there's a difference between a policy and ordinance, then let's, there's no downside to just doing an ordinance. I think it was Alderwoman Sterns, and then Fruen.
Well, you were first. He was first.
Oh, he was? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Alderman Fruen. I didn't see him first. I saw you first.
Question. If a FOIA comes in now, and the information is available on the website, do we just refer people to that, or are we obligated to give them paper?
Currently, we do let them know if it's on the website, but if they want us to, to provide them with a, a printed copy, we have to do that. The General Assembly recently approved a bill that would, that provided if you had internet access, and it was on the website, you just, you, you had to utilize the website to get it. We would not have to go through that process. But that bill was vetoed. So whether or not it'll be overridden in the legislative session is unclear.
I think that's unfortunate. It kind of defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do. We're trying to push as much information out there as we can. And I, I assume everything we're trying to push out there is, in some, in some respect, related to the volume and the types of FOIA requests we're getting, because we really need to, without inhibiting anybody, and I wanna make that clear, we need to make it simpler, that people can just go to the website and not bother to come into City Hall.
Absolutely. Alderwoman Sterns.
Thank you. I, I can see the ordinance versus the resolution, simply because, correct me if I'm wrong, a future city, city council, and of course, we'll certainly have that, wouldn't be, you know, quote-unquote, bound as a ordinance would.
No, an ordinance would be able to be amended by another ordinance. So if a future city council wanted to amend this, you know, policy, they could certainly do that.
Right. And, okay, but I think it would take a process to do that. Versus, if it's an ordinance in our code, there it is. Okay. And so I like the idea of the, of doing, I like that idea. This is a, is a great step forward, I think. I'm glad we're fighting the Illinois Policy Institute and using them as kind of a, an expert and a, you know, a good model and so on, to follow for transparency, which is mostly what they're, I think, all about. I'm sure they are. One of the things that concerns me, and this seems like not a bad time to address, because we're talking transparency, and obviously, we wanna be as transparent as we can, the most transparent city government that we've ever had. And one of the things we have, we don't talk about, but I think it deserves public discussion, is when I get an email from another council member regarding city business. I honestly do have the policy, correct me if I'm wrong, and it may be just an opinion, that our emails that have anything to do with city business should be and are obtainable. So, I mean, I think it's great that on the website, we're talking about how to do a FOIA for such things as an email. But yet, we're, we're calling this burdensome when citizens ask for that kind of thing? I mean, I've, I've seen it called burdensome. Well, if we just give them the emails that we're, we're, we've got about city business, it seems like it'd be very easy. And why not? Why are we rejecting or denying FOIAs for emails that concern city business? Why, why are we doing that? Why would we do it?
No, I, I can speak to that a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Because we've certainly talked about it. I mean, there are different means. I mean, your policy of sending out your emails that you receive, I mean, that's, that's your personal policy. But different people communicate in different ways.
Well, I don't, I don't send out all emails. Once in a while, I send one if I'm-
No, but I'm, but I'm just, what I'm saying, for example-
Mine can always be sent.
Right.
Mine are, mine are open, period.
Sure. But that doesn't necessarily mean that you're more open than other people. It just means you may communicate differently. For example, you and I, in our first year, when I was office, you and I talk a lot on the phone. Let's say we had 100 phone conversations. Both of us would've said things in those conversations that we wouldn't have wanted on the front page of the Panograph, right? Not every single one of them. So I think there are just different ways that people communicate. And so you, every human organization has to have some means by which people can communicate and decision-makers can communicate, especially if there are ideas that are, that they're just maybe thinking about throwing around, that are, that are somewhat confidential, that we know.
That citizens can't get, that are secret.
Well, the citizens have a right to know anything that's substantive that we do and spend money on.
I think so.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that, that if you and I had conversations, many of them, that we had candid conversations, just because you and I-
And they can always be referred to.
Would you to talk on the phone, if I recorded those and put those out on the public domain, that would be a felony, right? So I think it's just, there's a difference between how we communicate. So I think that there are, according to the law, right, there are certain, you don't have to have everything put out. Certainly, if you talk about individuals, personnel matters, those things we know. But it doesn't necessarily mean that different people communicate in different ways. Every time somebody goes to the bathroom, that doesn't necessarily mean that we need to put that out in the public domain.
No, it doesn't. But when we commit something to writing, when we send it to city council, when we copy people, and especially if we're discussing a person who might have a right to defend themselves, I think, you know, that that should be discoverable by the public. And I think really, to help me, Jeff, if you would, please explain to me how we can put an email out about city business, or that talks about the budget, or some other thing, and deny a citizen the right to see what we're saying on email. Help, help me understand that. Thank you.
Well, there's a, a couple of different things to consider there. If you're sending a email from your, from your public email address, the courts have held, and it's about public business, obviously, it's gonna be considered a public record. Now, that said, there may be applicable exemptions to that. A couple of the exemptions deal with, you know, personal information, private information. So if you put somebody's personal or private information within that email, that would be exempt from disclosure. If you put pre-decisional material or opinion information in the email, that would be exempt from disclosure. So while the email itself is a public record, the, there might be content within that document, just like any other document or any other public record, that could be exempt from FOIA. So that's, that's, you know, now, that's not to say that, you know, if, you know, if that email's, you know, coming from you, and you wanted, you know, if we got a, the city got a request for that, you know, at the city level, you know, that might be redacted or, or might be, you know, denied. But that's not to say you couldn't, you know, go out there and, and personally give out that email, if that email was from you and you wanted to disclose it. So.
Well, I appreciate that, Jeff, very much. And when you say pre-decisional, and by the way, I do have an opinion from the Illinois Policy Institute on this. And they strongly feel that pre-decisional means that we're formulating our ideas about doing something. And if, if that's not the case, like, we've got opinions of maybe this or maybe that, if we're not formulating an idea about doing something according to the Illinois Policy Institute, that email should be subject to FOIA. And again, my emails, anybody can send them anytime, they're, they're public, public, public. I've put it in writing, I've said it, and I don't care, you know. And I think a little bit more attention to that would help our transparency as a city. If we're willing to say something on email, if we're willing to send it to council, if we're willing to talk about someone or whatever we're doing, I think the public has a right to that. And that's just my opinion, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman Lombe.
Thank you. I have a quick question about, you know, who would be responsible for putting up the information? Some cases I've seen that the city clerk is responsible for some of it. I'm just, I'm curious how, as to how it's going to work day-to-day, you know, to make sure people don't forget, or, you know, something like that.
That's something that we've worked on, kind of at the staff level, between the clerk's office, the information services office, and to some degree, finance, because they'll be providing a lot of the documents. But that is something that I, I think is something still to be fine-tuned. But as, the, the one that's not automatically out there right now is the contracts, and that's the one that we're really gonna need to get a process on. And the clerk's office will be working with information services and the other departments on that.
And just to follow up with that, is there any concern that we would be able to deliver? Because I, I'd like to make sure that we, I like to under-promise and over-deliver if possible. So is there any concern that we wouldn't be able to do this by the middle of September?
Um, well, we, we did-
All contracts, 25,000 and above?
Yeah. We did set it out there, and the policy would provide that, starting September 1. At that point, we'd be putting- At that point, we'd be putting, you know, any new contract that was approved on the website. So I think staff is pretty comfortable that we'll be able to meet that objective in that deadline and going forward. Now, we also say, you know, if, if we can get older contracts on there, we will, but the priority is, you know, we've got to have a starting point here, and so the, the starting point is going to be September 1, where if you guys at your, your meeting in September adopt a contract, that contract's going to be turned around and put on the website. And that's something, and I have the city clerk, or I ask, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that's necessarily happening right now. Or is it?
Right now, if you look at your proceedings, if we receive a contract in Word format, and we can easily insert it, they're in there. So probably 80% of your contracts are in there. Large contracts, things like your $10 million bond, street issue, those come in sometimes later, we do not get those in Word format, they are scanned into our MUNIS system, they are not on the web. We're going to have to decide and design somewhere to put these. So if you would do a web search right now, and some of the contracts that were recently approved, and I use the example, I can't think in our meeting, because Craig proved to me you could do it. There's a recent contract that, it might have been the Sterling Northrup contract, I said, see if you can find that one. So he typed in contract and Sterling Northrup, and it took you right to the proceedings, and there it was. So there are a great number of-
And is it, in something like the bond, just a real quick question, if they're not in Word format, what's the problem of scanning them and putting into some form or we can still get them on the web?
We'll scan them and put them into a PDF.
Right.
The issue, if I remember right from Scott, if we have a Word file and convert it to a PDF, that is keyword searchable. If we scan a document and create a PDF, it is not as easily searchable, just down to like keywords that might be in the contract.
So we'd like to make it as searchable as possible-
Right, right, well, then that's critical to the web, yeah.
But resources might, you know, the resources might just dictate that we have to scan them in, and so, but we'll, that's something, you know, that the policy gives us a little flexibility on, and we'll try and, you know, do our best on that.
Yes, Alderman Black.
Thank you. All the way in. So we're looking for feedback on this policy, and it's going to come to the council at some point, and-
That's right.
Okay. You know, I'm fine with that, I mean, it seems the criteria that we use is, is okay. You know, I'll tell you, having been in office now for just over a year, at all the neighborhood association meetings I've ever gone to, transparency has never once come up. This is one of those issues where, and people are like, I, whatever you do with your emails, that's, that's your business, but I'd rather make, make sure my, my pothole is fixed, or, you know, my, my sewer is having those issues. They want that addressed first. So I consider this to be an, an important matter, but, but not entirely urgent. But I also want to make sure that there's some teeth in what we, if we put an ordinance together, where is there, how can we get some accountability for following through on that? So, you know, if we miss a deadline or something, is, is that going to be a oops, I'm sorry? Or is there, can we put something in there that has some sort of teeth that, I mean, I don't know what that, that consequence would be, but it just is, it, it seems almost lip service at some point. I mean, that's just a thought that I have. You know, when it comes to the emails issue, you know, i- if it truly turns out that all of my emails are FOI-able, why don't we just have a process where all of my emails just get put on the website? But I'm, I'm not sure that everybody who sends me an email knows that that's possible. So I get people that will send me stuff that are maybe written in haste or written with-
And I'm not suggesting that stuff, just to let you know.
Oh, sure.
I, I agree.
Yeah, but I, I think if we're going to talk about this, we have to have a mechanism-
I'm talking about our emails, not, not-
To each other?
To each other especially, yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, okay, I mean, that, that's, that's a, a point that we can argue, and if that's the case, then maybe we have a mechanism to all emails that we send to each other. I mean, I've been advocating for a while that we get all of the emails that are sent to city council to be fully public. I mean, I, I think that the emails that we get sometimes are fact-based and are lacking any kind of fact whatsoever, and in some cases slanderous, and, and if they got up here and said that, they would be, they wouldn't do it. But they will send us an email, and that's, that somehow can hide that, and I, I don't think that's appropriate. But that, these mechanisms, I think, need to be worked out, but in, in terms of staff time, I mean, I consider this important, but I mean, if we, if it's this or trying to get a policy together for sidewalks and addressing that, I mean, that's, to me, more important.
Okay. In terms, can you address the teeth aspect of this, or do we just say, oops, sorry, we're bad boys?
Well, I, I think it's like any other policy that the city would adopt. I mean, you'd look to staff to, you know, enforce it, to make it happen, and if staff doesn't enforce it and make it happen, you, you know, you'd look to us and you'd say, what's going on here, and, and what do we need to do different? I'm not sure, you know, for the reasons that you, you speak about, you know, I'm not sure that you want to make this, you know, kind of an ordinance violation where, you know, the city's going to start to get fined and penalized and, and those kinds of things. I, I, to me, I see this as, this is a policy, this is the direction, this is what the city council is telling us you want to make happen on the website, and we go out there and we make it happen. And if we don't, y- you come back and you say, why not? But, but that's your all decision.
Okay, let me ask one, just to, so that you have direction. I get, get the sense that nobody really is against going forward and making this policy into an ordinance? Okay, then I think you've got that direction.
Do we still have something to provide to you about that?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely. You know, this is just our work session where we're giving him some, some direction. So you may as well stay right where you are, right? Because of our, our last item here, is an update on the Freedom of Information Act FOIA procedures, and we've got 10 minutes budgeted for that, although we're-
Yeah, just real quick, we wanted to bring the council up to speed. Something that's been on our project list for a while now has been to update the city's process in handling FOIA requests. And so one of the things that we're currently working on is a process wherein there will be more eyes, more department involvement in gathering the documents, reviewing the documents, and making the, helping to make the determinations as to what's, what's released and, and what's exempt. So we wanted to give you an update on that. It's something that's still in progress, but something that we'll be transitioning to. The, one of the primary objectives is to have less legal involvement in it, quite frankly, to be able to utilize the legal resources in the legal department for other, you know, more, you know, city projects, not necessarily more pressing, but more city projects. I want to make sure everybody's aware, everybody will be very well-trained on it, and we're going to still have legal involvement in if something's redacted or not released, and we're going to also initiate kind of internal, you know, audit controls to, to help with the FOIA process. The other thing that we might be coming back to the city council with is a concept to where if somebody wants, you know, if they get a denial, that they could kind of informally appeal it through the city, if they don't want to go to the public access counselor, you know, that would preclude them from doing that, but if they just want kind of a quick review from within the city council that, or from within the city, that they could do that. So that, you know, maybe another set of eyes, maybe something I haven't seen, it's something that I've done in the past for, you know, a couple of requesters, and we go through, we look and see, well, you know, maybe this should have been released, or no, this was, was a valid, you know, reason not to release this. So that's something we might be bringing forward to the city council as well in the future.
If, if you could just, just tell me to put you on the spot, well, if you could clarify what that might look like?
In terms of the internal appeal process?
So if it's initially designed, you know, denied, then someone might have the possibility of an appeal?
Yeah, my, my initial thought would be that would go through the corporation council's office, and we would do kind of a review of that. If it's something that we actually, you know, like, for example, that I was involved in and, and, you know, making a recommendation, you know, I'd probably send it up to food chain somewhere, but initially, we just have another, you know, review process. Not, you know, not everybody would take advantage of it, you could still, of course, go to the public out, access counselor, you know, for a review, but it'd just be another way that, you know, maybe if there was, you know, a mistake, or, you know, somebody's asking for reconsideration of something, it'd be a, a quicker and simpler process to have somebody within the city take a look at it.
And then we wouldn't really have legal spending that much time on the day-to-day stuff. It would maybe be the only few that are denied that were controversial, perhaps, or questioned.
Right, exactly. The, the goal would be to have legal, the legal department less involved in it, except for, you know, kind of reviewing and making some, some final redactions and those kinds of things, and to free up specifically the attorneys in the legal department for other projects.
Thank you. Other questions to Mr. Jerk?
What, what would be the legal recourse, other than going to the PAC? Isn't there a, you know, a case can be filed?
Yes, you could go to the public ac- i- if a, if a request is denied, you can either go to, file a request for review with the public access counselor or in circuit court. So those are the two options available. Obviously, most people go to the public access counselor, but there is the circuit court option as well.
Right, and if, and if someone did file a lawsuit for, you know, improper denial or whatever, what would be the ramifications of that? I'm just-
If, if somebody files a, were to go to trial, there would be, you know, we would kind of obviously review it again, make sure we're on very strong grounds. If we would, if we would decide, you know, this is not one that the city's interested in fighting, perhaps, you know, you could always release the document, but if we went to trial and we argued it and we lost at the end of the day, the circuit court could award us or require the city to pay the attorney fees of the person who filed the request.
Plus a penalty, or?
Uh, the very, the courts typically don't assess a penalty. I haven't seen one do it yet, as, as far as I know, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay.
Unless there's other questions?
Mr. Kimberling, anything you want to bring to our attention?
Yes, Mayor, I have two items for today. One of them is, I want to make sure that all of you are aware that Officer Marvin Arnold is actually retiring from the police department after 30 years. He's been a patrolman, a detective, and is retiring as the school resource officer for Bloomington High School. He will be having his retirement ceremony from 2:00 to 4:00 on Wednesday, the 23rd of July, at the Osborne Room, and so you are all very much invited to come and tell him what a wonderful job he's done and to congratulate him on his retirement. And the last item I have is, I'd like to call Deputy City Manager Sue McGlaughlin up to introduce our new community development director, who is sitting in the back of the room, so.
Yes, I'd like to, I'm very pleased to introduce our new community development director, Tom Dave Reiner. Good, I did it right. Today was his first day. He hails from, his last job was, he served seven years as Director of Community Development in Village of Downersboro.